Good morning, everyone. I just want to check in with the Zoom webinar to make sure that we are being heard in Zoom.
Yes, we're hearing you well. Thank you.
Oh, great. Terrific. Thank you both. Okay, so Chair, we are ready to begin on time.
Excellent. Thank you. Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the November 22nd, 2022 Board of Supervisors meeting. As customary, we'll start with a moment of silence. And is there anyone with a moment of silence this morning?
The shooting?
The shooting in Colorado? So we'll conduct a moment of silence for the shooting in Colorado, which took many lives and was another unfortunate act of violence in the United States. Barbara Ringen, can you lead us in the pledge, please?
To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Barbara. All right. Okay. Next item on the agenda is four, consideration of extra items not appearing on the posted agenda. And I think we don't have that. We just have an addendum. So we're, right? Okay. Approval of the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are commonly non-controversial. However, if anyone wants to pull one from the board or from the public, they can do so. So I will go ahead and open this up for, is there anyone from the board that wants to pull an item from the agenda? Consent agenda, that is. Open up to the public. Is there anyone in the public that would like to pull something from the consent agenda? All right, hearing nothing from the public. We'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve consent agenda, items number 5.1 through 5.11.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? And motion carries. 5-0. Let's see. So we are at 9:02. We'll go ahead and, let's see, GeoThermal Committee, 7.3. So 7.3 is consideration of appointment to the GeoThermal Advisory Committee. Let's see, let's open this up. And so it looks like there is, is it a reappointment? Oh, no, it was a resignation. So now there's an attached application to fill the seat. And so we'll be looking at that. And I think this is in your district, Supervisor Pyska, so.
Yes. This is, we've had a vacancy from the Cobb Area Water Board. And so Ben Murphy, the manager, had resigned. And so Board Member Jim Agar has agreed to step on and fill that vacancy.
Okay. Any other comments from the board? Hearing nothing from the board. I'll go ahead and bring it up to public input, see if there's anyone that has a comment on this. Not seeing any hands. I'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, I move that we appoint the qualified applicant to the GeoThermal Advisory Committee.
Second.
So I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Still at 9:04. Let's see. Do you think the 7.4 will take a minute? Or, no, it probably will.
Are you ready for 7.6?
Six. Yeah, I guess we can, we can do that one, right?
I don't see him. So no.
No? All right. Well, I mean, we could do calendars. All right. Anybody want to volunteer to do the calendars first? Go ahead, move.
I'll start. At the Risk Reduction Authority meeting yesterday, you know, we thought it went good. It's moving along. We're transitioning to some different reporting, you know, where some of the partners are reporting at the Fire Safe Council and the Lake County Fire Safe Council. But we're continuing to move forward. Has a presentation from American Red Cross. They're looking to set up in our community for the next few years, 10 years, I think, altogether, but two for sure in Lake County. We have onsite representatives that are going to help work, I think, with the COAD, some other stuff to look at pre-mitigation disaster, kind of pre-positioning stuff, which I think is exciting. So it was a good presentation that we had yesterday by Nick. And then, you know, moving forward with, you know, our budgeting issues that we're bringing forward and working with all of the partners for some contributions to be brought to the table by each partner. So those discussions will be happening. We'll be following up on those. So we're excited about the steps forward that we've been making with our, our partners as we move forward. And that is trying to cover a little bit of a budget gap that we have about $24,000 and $5,000 contributions from each partner is what we voted on yesterday. So they'll be going back to each agency and we'll be working through that because ultimately, you know, we want this thing to be a standalone JPA. And so we're working in that direction. It's taken three or four years, but we're getting there. A little bit of growth each year. The rest of the week, obviously, is we do have Thanksgiving coming up. So we'll be attending that, obviously, here locally. There are a bunch of dinners, which we heard about yesterday, too. There's a free Thanksgiving dinner, I think, going on in Clear Lake. I'm probably going to get the date wrong, but I think it's on Thanksgiving at the Senior Center. You may have heard on that. And then also at the Twin Pine Casino, we're going to be doing our Thanksgiving dinner for free community dinners from 2:00 to 5:00. And so it's just great to hear the way our community comes together and gives back, especially in these times of need for folks. The rest of the week, kind of open. Monday, I have a meeting with some Lower Lake representatives from the Action Committee. I've got to go to the cemetery. I've got to look at a couple of different issues. We have some dumping issues down in that area. I'm going to spend some time to meet with Russ Kramer and also Mike Dean, just to look at a couple of issues we have going on down there. Also, you know, next week is kind of an open calendar. Coming back after the holiday. We don't have a meeting next week, the 29th. So we'll be back and then meeting on Friday with CAO and then back here on Tuesday, the 6th, for our board meeting.
Yeah, I'll go. Yeah, just following up from the RRA meeting. I don't know if you mentioned it because I was talking with our CAO. But with the Red Cross new program for risk management, or what is it, risk reduction, there's only eight counties in the whole country that were selected. And two in California were Lake and Butte. And so we're going to be working, those people that they brought in to live locally are going to be working and partner with the other county in California. So it's pretty incredible. They do have funding for two years. And then the 10-year commitment, we don't quite know what that looks like, but it's incredible. I mean, we've been through a lot. We shouldn't have to earn something like this, but we did. And the whole idea is more preventative work will hopefully prevent the catastrophic outcomes that we have seen. So it's been incredible. I was at the CSAC Conference last week with Supervisor Green, and the theme was advancing change. And it was pretty, it was, it was really wonderful to have everybody together, kind of just accepting what we've been through, reflecting on what we've been through over the last several years, and how we can, we really advancing the change by, by, by learning the lessons of everything. We're never going back, is what I guess the biggest takeaway is. And how we're going to be moving forward, it's not ever going to look like anything we've done before. So that was, it was wonderful to finally meet all of the supervisors I've been having calls with and spend time with them. So I, I got a lot out of it. I'm really grateful that I had that opportunity to go. Because I was gone, Matthew went for me to OES to speak on a panel in Sacramento about the collaborative work that we've been doing. They are really interested in how we organize at a local level. And so Matthew went and, and carried that. And I'm really grateful that he did that. And he did, from what I hear, he did an awesome job, which shouldn't surprise any of us. So thanks, Matthew, for doing that. And then also, while he was doing that, he put together the LIDAR application with the contractor that we had engaged with, collecting all the letters of support. But the biggest news that came is that the Conservation, the Department of Conservation has agreed to pay the USGS co-funding amount of $160,000, which is incredible because we, the board, agreed to pay it if we didn't have, if it didn't come through with one of the clerk grants, or the state didn't pick it up, we were going to be the third place to make sure that it got paid. And so now the state is picking it up. We're probably going to be expected to put just a little skin in the game, just to, you know, make our application stronger. But that application was submitted. And we're going down that road to get our LIDAR. Hopefully, we'll hear about that soon. So those are really exciting things. And then this week and next week are really busy. I did enjoy that little break in between all the Harvest Festivals, and now we're into full holiday mode. So tomorrow, agenda review is skipped, right?
Correct.
Okay. And then I have the Home Hardening meeting. And then on Sunday, I am submitting my tree, my Christmas tree for the Festival of Trees for the Hospice fundraiser, which happens on December 3rd. So people decorate trees, donate them. They're on display in Kelseyville all week. And then at the Hospice event, which you can still purchase tickets for, everybody bids on Christmas trees. And it's really exciting. And that's how we fund hospices, important work locally in Lake County. On the 28th, we are not having our weekly meeting with CAO Parker, but I am waiting to find out when we're going to have our meeting regarding Fire Safe Council with NCO and RCD. And then that evening is the KBA mixer at the Ripe Choice. Tuesday morning, I'm having a meeting with staff on the Zone of Benefits and a meeting with Assistant CAO Stephen. Wednesday, we are going to have the agenda review. December 1st, oh, wow, that means that day is actually open. And then Friday, I am having the Managing Conflict Class with CSAC. And then that night is Christmas in the Country with the Light Parade in Kelseyville, which is a highlight of the year. Then December 3rd, breakfast with Santa at the Little Red Schoolhouse, but put on by the Cobb School PTO. But the public is welcome. And it's, it's really great to see all the little kids who aren't yet in school coming to participate there. And there's a little holiday market. It's a really sweet event. And then the CTA Social is later in the morning in Kelseyville with a toy drive at Kelseyville Fire Protection District. And then that evening is the Hospice Festival of Trees. And then Sunday, the 4th, is the Fiddler's Jam, which is the holiday event. And that's one of my favorites. So I'm hoping I'm going to be able to make it that day. And then December 5th is my Monday meeting with CAO Parker. And then there is an event at Six Sigma, which I may or may not be able to make. And then back here on the 6th.
Supervisor Smathi?
Yes. Trying to think of some of the meetings that I had last week and any thing of significance. I'm looking at Supervisor Simon. I don't think there was anything other than just formalities for LAFCO.
Yeah.
I don't think there was anything of great significance. I do know that there is a, some annexation paperwork being discussed from the city of Clear Lake. And there's some other annexations that were discussed that are happening as well, are being looked into in the Middletown area that's continuing. During our AVA, I do want to say, I think the AVA has really, really grown. I'm going to put Lakeport on the map on this one. Usually, Lakeport every three months would have like one tow. And now they are really starting to get things moving. They're really utilizing their AVA. They're, they're really organized between their code enforcement and their police force. And the same has been happening for the city of Clear Lake and for the county. It is an amazing number of vehicles over the course of the year. Correct me if I'm wrong, Supervisor Simon, was it 740 vehicles that we took off the streets?
Yes.
That's just, imagine if all those vehicles were still there. Like, there's always more that need to be towed out and, and the blight that still exists. And those are being worked on. But 740 vehicles for the, we get approximately $20,000 a quarter from the state to be able to pull that off. And so there were, there were some discussions at the AVA. How do we try to request more funding? How do we make this sustainable? Because we're taking money out of our general funds in order to be able to afford these things. But leaving them out in the open to the weather and to the vandalism that could occur is a lot worse than the payments that are being made in order to make sure that those vehicles go away. So appreciate what the AVA has been doing, and we always keep pushing forward for more. At the CSAC meeting, I think one of the most notable things that happened was the new president was appointed, and that's President Washington from Riverside. I do want to give kudos to our prior president, President Valenzuela. I know that with his leadership and with Graham Canaus, that we now have a grant writer available to our communities, our counties, to be able to go after grants to help us out rather than leaving it just in our staff. And I know that our admin has been to those workshops in order to learn about how to go through that. And I think that's going to be a lasting legacy from President Valenzuela. He is from an absolute rural community out over in Siskiyou. So he understands what the capacity needs of his staff are and the fact that they can't just go after all the grants. And so now we have an extra crutch that we can lean on in order to help us get some of those grants. I think that's pretty much my summary of my previous week. Tomorrow, I have a couple of meetings. I have a follow-up with PEG to make sure that we keep moving stuff financially and meeting with others as well. And then the rest of the week is pretty much off. I do have some meetings on, there's some Hope Rising meetings on Tuesday, First Five meeting on Tuesday. And I know that I'm the alternate, but I will still be there to listen in and keep up with what the conversation is asking for. There's, oh, I missed a big one that I wanted to actually talk about.
Friday?
Yeah. And sorry if I'm stealing your thunder, but.
You don't have to say that. Just give your report.
We, we, we were invited to meet with, and this was part of transitioning from CSAC Board of Directors meeting to Friday. We were invited by Governor Newsom to discuss the cancellation of everyone's application for how to provide better support for our population experiencing homelessness. It was a bit of an awkward conversation. There was about a 20-minute to 30-minute grandstand from our governor of, we shouldn't rely on state funding. And to be honest, I was a little worried by some of the comments made by the counties, which was, make some of these things mandatory, while at the same time, our governor just said you shouldn't rely on state funding. I, I, I struggle to understand how a county can request something to be mandatory with the state saying we might not, it might just be another unfunded mandate. As far as I'm concerned, from the County of Lake, the aggregate of all the applications requested a reduction of 2% of the homeless population. That's the aggregate of all the applications that he received, hence why he said, you're not trying hard enough. Our application is requesting, I believe it was 10%, I'm kind of looking at Behavioral Health, who's in the room, maybe they know, maybe they don't. But I believe it was a 20, 10% reduction is what our application provided. So we were way above the aggregate. But challenge accepted. We do, we do know that we want to do better. We need to do better. And so let's go ahead and take that challenge. And let's see what we can get accomplished. But let's aim for actual change and not just help. Help is different. We want to change people's lives, not just provide them what they need today. We want to change their lives tomorrow. But that was a, a long meeting, one I had to step out towards the end. It was more than two hours. I believe he did listen and he did hear us. And I will highlight one comment, which is something that I'm experiencing, which came from the mayor of San Diego, that he gets up every morning to find a gentleman who lives in the streets without pants on every single morning. And he stated, I'm not stating this for you to laugh at the situation. We can't do anything if they don't accept services. And we have to find ways to provide help to these people because obviously they need help. And I'm dealing with the same situation that I'm working with our Behavioral Health Director, where this person is an absolute nuisance to the area, including the businesses, but there's nothing we can do because services are being denied. And it makes it a very difficult task to be able to provide a, the type of atmosphere in our community that we want to provide. We want to help these people. We don't want to ship them or, as they were saying, warehouse them. We want, we want to, we want to provide services to help them get into a better place. But anyways, that's the gist of that. I feel like I'm rambling on and on. So I will just continue. So as I stated, I have a couple Hope Rising meetings. I have a PEG financial meeting with the city of Clear Lake, Blue Zone meeting. All that is happening on next Thursday and Wednesday. And Housing Navigator meeting on Friday. And then coming back on the 28th, or the 4th, the 5th, I have Middle Creek Restoration Project meeting on that Monday, meeting with our CAO, and then our meeting on the 6th, and that will end my very long calendar.
Supervisor Green?
I enjoyed the long calendar because mine is going to be short. So I apparently still need to get my calendar on my little device here. I'll work on that. Next week, my first meeting with Scotch Valley Advisory Council, looking forward to that. They did bump First Five a week because of Thanksgiving, so I will be looking forward to that as well. And also appreciate you still attending Supervisor Sabatia to give that continuity. Did attend CSAC Conference last week with Supervisor Pyska, and whoa. It was, I don't know, life-changing, but it was certainly sobering and energizing at the same time. Just the gravity of the situations and the education for me is to, you might imagine there's some differences between rural and suburban and urban counties, but it's like, whoa, had no idea when their budgets in our larger counties have billions with a B. And we don't have that. And also Stricken, you know, in the happiest place on earth, those didn't look like the happiest homeless people in that community. So as much as you can see great distinctions in wealth and opportunity and jobs, stuff like that, in our Southern California neighbors, you can see that they're also struggling with some of the very same situations we are here in Lake County. And kind of sobering for that. I appreciate that you were able to get on that conference call with the governor's office. One thing that we were hearing at CSAC is, yeah, something was going on, but we didn't get the memo. We didn't get the link to that meeting. I'm glad somebody was able to plug in because I was, I was floundering by text and trying to get whoever our local staff people were assigned to that application. And I totally whiffed. And so apologies to Director Mark Tan for reaching out. Turned out I needed to be reaching out to BH. And I did finally contact somebody yesterday to point me in the right direction. Sounds like a bit of posturing. I think the funding will be coming. But it, but it was an interesting introduction to this. And so I'm looking forward to those discussions moving forward. Also appreciate the comments on AVA. I think if there's a change in City of Lakeport, we can appreciate Bethany Moss for the great job she's doing over there. And of course, under the guidance of City Manager Kevin Ingram. Unfortunately, we're losing our Planning Director over there, Jenny Myers, shortly. But AVA and code enforcement, after years and years of struggles in the city, I'm very excited to see that part of the city services being expanded. Also going back to CSAC, met some great people from, again, counties, large and small. And I did have the opportunity to have dinner with Rose Marie Smallcomb, who's the District One Supervisor out of Mariposa County, who kindly shared with me the origin story of the pervasive tree mortality, emergency declarations. And as overwhelmed as I was with all these big, swinging counties and all the stuff they do, the fact that a single supervisor in a small rural county was able to just start driving this bus so effectively that it ended up in a statewide disaster proclamation. And of course, us following on, hugely, hugely amazed by her energy and her intelligence and her compassion, her ability to just grab this one issue and just drive that. So kudos to Rose Marie for that. I think that's all I have for next week. And this week, I hope everyone has a good Thanksgiving holiday.
Excellent. Thank you. Let's see. Be brief on the report about the housing meeting that was, the email came to me last week. I was glad that you had Supervisor Sabatia asked around about it because it was very important to attend that. And as we got in on that meeting, because I'm, because as the chair, they send it to each chair of the board. They would like, they wanted two elected officials, and that's it. So we were trying to add other staff to be in. And so I knew you were in CSAC, or I would have forwarded it to you as the supervisor, since you both are on continuum of care. But sitting in on it, just, you know, everything that Supervisor Sabatia said was pretty head-on. I just know he also mentioned he'd like to see the counties get a little, county cities get a little more aggressive. And that he wanted to see us working on counties and everything, working on plans rather than, rather than just depending on money. And I heard that loud and clear. And he also felt that the counties were somewhat complacent with the situation by not putting more effort towards it. So I heard all that. But at the same time, I'm hoping to see that funding come soon. So let's see, tomorrow, we don't have agenda review, so just be working on that. Next week, there is no CAO meeting. So Scotch Valley, I think I might just, because I don't know if you got the Zoom set up yet, so I'll go in with you and pass the host off to you.
No, I got it, Joe.
Oh, you got it?
Yeah.
Okay, we're good.
I already passed the baton.
All right. So with that, Wednesday, we have agenda review. On the 30th, Thursday, I have, it's called, I think it's the Safer Meeting with the Upper Lake, about the Upper Lake CWD project. Then, let's see, Monday, Middle Creek Restoration. I'm back here on Tuesday for Board Supervisors. And there's our calendars. Apologize, we pushed way far further than we needed to, but that's done, right? So we'll move on to our 6.1, public input. It was scheduled at 9:06. Here we are. Public input, if anybody wants to come up and speak for three minutes about an item that's not on the agenda, please come up. So if there's anyone in the chambers that would like to speak about public, in the public during this item on the agenda, I'll look on Zoom. I don't see anyone. So I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. Move on to item 6.2, Consideration of September 30th, 2022 Report of Lake County Pooled Investments. With that, we'll ask the presenters to come up. And we have Patrick Sullivan, Barbara Ringen. I don't, I'll go from there.
Good morning, Board. Patrick Sullivan, County Tax Administrator. We are here with Ms. Barbara Ringen, Treasury Tax Collector, and Carlos Abalitas from Chandler Asset Management to present the quarterly report.
All right.
Good morning, Supervisors. It's a delight to be with you once more. I'd like to update you on the activity on the investment portfolio and the economy. I'll keep it nice and brief and hit the highlights. And there's some questions, I think, that came out. I want to make sure that I address them before we leave. So unless you've been living under a rock, I think you're all aware that inflation is the big concern in the economy right now. Inflationary pressures, and Patrick, if we are able to go to page number five, I think that'd be best. Inflationary pressures have really continued to weigh the economy down, although we're starting to see the inflation numbers come down slightly, which is giving some. starting to see the inflation numbers come down slightly, which is giving some pause or some thinking to economists that the Federal Reserve may start thinking about pausing their path to raising rates. So let's back up for a second. We've talked about how the pandemic closed everything down and that reopening and all the activity to sort of re-kick off the economy has placed a lot of demand on, on goods and services, so prices have been pushed higher. People have access to money and liquidity because they were able to borrow cheaply during the pandemic with very low interest rates. And they had pent-up demand because you couldn't take vacations, you couldn't buy certain things, you couldn't even leave your homes in certain instances. So now that things have reopened, people are out competing for goods and services, and that's pushed prices up. We've had prices through June reach the highest level that we've seen since, since very early 1980s. We had the Consumer Price Index, which is a chart on the left-hand, on the left-hand side, reach, where you'll see that peak, it reached 9.1%. So you can see that that's now starting to come down. And the last reading that we had was down to 7.7%. In order to combat this, the Federal Reserve has been cutting off access to liquidity by reducing the money supply. That's fancy terms for saying they're making it more expensive for people to borrow money with which they go out and compete for goods and services. And hopefully that will bring prices down. That's sort of a tried and true method of doing that. So they've been raising rates, they manipulate the overnight lending rate between banks. That's called the federal funds rate, and if we go over to page number 11, that'll be the chart on the right-hand side. You can see how rates were on the rise back in 2016 and 17, and now then they came down dramatically as a result of coronavirus, and now they're on a path to raise that rate. That eventually gets passed on to the rest of the bond markets and the rest of the economy. They're, by this action, they're reducing the money supply and making it more expensive to borrow, and will hopefully keep people from consuming and driving those prices up. That's what they're in the path of doing. Why is this important to you? It's important because you have a fixed income portfolio, it's a debt securities portfolio, and your earnings from those, from those bonds that you hold, every time you purchase a bond, you're purchasing a bond, you're lending money out, and you're going to get interest rate on that money that you're lending out, and that interest rate will be equivalent to whatever is prevailing in the market. And whatever is prevailing in the market has risen significantly. And if you go to the next page, on page number 12, the chart on the left-hand side shows that. We hit a peak of two-year treasury yields of 4.7. They're about 4.5% right now. That's up from 0.7 at the beginning of the year. So we've had this discussion, I don't think any of this is a surprise to the supervisors, we've been discussing this from, for several months now, and that's the path that we've been on. That has a dual effect on your investment portfolio. Number one, as rates rise, the value, the underlying value of your investments goes down, and it's gone down dramatically. I'm sure your auditor controller booked a significant loss in your financial statements. It's a paper loss, you don't realize that unless you sell the entire portfolio, which is not the practice of the county treasury. So no worries there. The second impact that the rising rates has on your portfolio is that every time you have a maturity, that maturity gets reinvested in higher interest income. And I think it's, it's valid to go to page number 17. And if you look at the very middle row, it's the average purchase yield. You can see, that's the interest, the effective annualized earnings rate that you should expect at that point in time for the coming year, based on the investments you have in the portfolio. So you can see that June 30, that was expected to be 1.04. As of 9:30, it's 155. It's significantly higher. To give you an idea, I was looking at interest income on a monthly basis. Your Treasury Tax Collector, your Treasury Tax Collector-elect, and I were looking at this in the back of the room. And to give you an idea, when we, when we were looking at this investment portfolio and we were starting to ramp up back in September of last year, 2021, we were looking at income of about $23,000 a month. Rates were very low at that time. Today, we're looking at about $545,000 a month coming into the coffers. For the last year, for the last 12 months, you've earned $3.3 million in interest income, just to give you an idea. So it's moving in the right direction. As you can see in the, in the table behind us, the yields are coming higher. The portfolio is valued at $425.5 million. That includes the investment portfolio that Chandler manages on your behalf. It includes funds that are maintained in the state pool, local agency investment fund, some small funds in a local government investment pool called CAMP, and of course, the funds that you have at the bank from which you cut checks and make payments for your obligations. That is, you'll see that that differs a little bit from the prior quarter. Obviously, there's a seasonality to it from the cash, the most liquid component, because as the year progresses, the county collects tax receipts, and then they spend it and they pass it on for all the other things that the county has to do. Obviously, we're now, today is the 22nd of November. In a few weeks, you're, you're going to obviously see a ramp up of tax collections come in as people pay their property taxes. So those balances will start moving back up again, and then they'll come down a little bit, and then they'll do the same thing again in April. It's helpful to see on page number 18, you are very well diversified. The, the state pool, and the state pool, it just labeled LEAF, it's that green slice at the bottom, is about 15%, very liquid, that's what's held to make payments. Obviously, the cash, 6.2 on the, I'm looking at the chart on the left-hand side, the dark green slice, about 6%, that's the cash at the bank. But you can see that about, almost a third of the portfolio is invested in treasury securities, about 15% in corporate. The California Government Code allows you to buy as much as 30% in corporate securities, which generally pay you a higher yield. But with the kind of environment that we're living in, where financial conditions are becoming tighter, the Federal Reserve is in essence slowing the economy down by raising rates. And the opportunities for businesses to continue to grow at the pace that they had before are now diminishing. And some people think, well, perhaps we may be moving in towards, towards a recession, a contraction of the economy. We're not, we're not quite there yet. But when you have tighter financial conditions, the weakest corporate credits may, may have some downgrade activity. So for that reason, we tend to go up in liquidity and credit quality by buying more governmental securities. And that's why you're seeing, you can see that three months prior, treasury's made up about 27% to they make, they make up about 30, 30 and 1/2%. Federal agencies made up about 12, a little bit over 12% to they, they make up almost 16%. So you can see there's a little bit more of a bias towards governmental securities. It's not that we're seeing a credit event or we're seeing any danger in the economy, but when you have tighter financial conditions, we feel it's prudent to improve the credit quality and more so improve the liquidity of the portfolio by having very, very liquid investments. Looking at page, just jump over to page 20. So that yield that you saw that was at 155 in that table that I showed you, you can just see the progression of that yield going back to the summer of 2021. It's been on its way up. And there's two reasons for that. Number one, because working as a team with your Treasury Tax Collector and Treasury Tax Collector-elect and the county treasury, we can, we keep an eye on how much liquidity is needed, and when we have excess cash, that cash gets moved into the investment portfolio to be invested in higher yielding securities. So when we get a new influx of cash, that cash is picking up those yields that you saw that were rising in that prior chart. So that's moving the average yield of the portfolio higher. And of course, we also, when we're working with the ad hoc committee to determine our strategy, one of the things that that committee, one of the decisions that the committee made was to maintain the weighted average maturity of this portfolio a little bit lower and the duration a little bit lower, so that you would have more maturities coming due faster. And that's also been a function that's been driving these yields up. So that's continued, that's just continued to be a good, a good decision and a good position for the county. I'll, I'll end with this. The county continues to avoid, and we haven't had any direct exposure to Russia. We continue to avoid it. We have filters in our systems to make sure that we, that we're not going to buy anything like that to be in accordance with, with the current, the current rules. Everything is well diversified. There's a certification in your packet that, that demonstrates that the investments continue to follow California Government Code. And we'll continue working as a team with your treasury to make sure that we keep an eye on liquidity, making sure that you have money when you need it, and investing to capture the highest yields possible for the lowest amount of risk. Let me stop there and take any questions you may have.
Supervisor Sabate.
Thank you very much for this report. I think a year ago compared to today is immensely different and outrageous, actually. It's, it's amazing. Do we know what was, you said 3.3 million? Is that actual interest that we've received over the course of the past year? Or is that kind of continuously reused and reinvested?
So Supervisor Sabate, that is, that is an accrual-based earnings, so it's, it's everything.
Okay.
As you're aware, when you purchase a bond, bonds only pay off every six months. So if you're not buying it on the day that it pays off, whoever held it before you, you had to pay them their interest from the prior payment date to the day that you buy it. That's called a purchase of accrued interest. So that's factored in there. If you sell a bond, there's a sale of accrued interest, that's factored in there. And then, of course, as you hold the bond, the payments only come every six months, generally every six months for, and that varies per bond on which those are. So while you're waiting for that, the interest that you, that's there is accruing to you, meaning it's entitled to you, but you won't receive it until the next payment date. So that, this number includes those accruals, meaning income that you, that's yours, you've earned, you're entitled to it, you just haven't received it yet. And it also includes those payments that have been paid back to you, that have been redeemed. So if there was an interest payment date and, and the payment came in, that payment is in the portfolio. So it's, it's a very holistic view, that's called an accruals-based earning, to give you a full view of what you own, whether you've received it or not. And of course, that interest gets reinvested back into the portfolio into securities.
Okay. Because I know that, I was speaking with the auditor controller, and I think I mentioned it in my report a week or so ago, that we had a $600,000 interest payment that we had received for one specific quarter. That's unheard of for the past, at least the years that I've been here. So appreciate the work that Chandler has been doing, has absolutely turned things around. Will you be coming to us once you have better key factors known of the economy to see if we want to change kind of our strategy for maybe longer terms or things like that? Or is there already kind of a foresight of this is maybe when we want to do that? Or is it completely unknown because the economy is still very not predictable at this moment?
Supervisor Sabate, we, it's our practice to revisit this once a year with the treasury and the Treasury Tax Collector. So the, I think the question is, does this strategy continue to make sense? Right now, the strategy you have is an absolutely great strategy for the environment, but it's also a good strategy for the long run. It was selected more with the liquidity needs of the, of the treasury, making funds available for the, for the participants when needed. And, and for that effect, it's very useful and it's, it's efficacious. It's doing its job. It just happens to be that we're in an environment where it's also very much in favor. Now, we may enter into an environment that's not in favor, but that's not necessarily a reason to change it. The reason is, is because you get into a situation where you start trying to time how to shift the overall strategy, and at some point, you will not be able to call that timing incorrectly, and it could damage the portfolio. So we try to avoid that. But to your point, on an annual basis, we come back and look at the strategy and say, does this continue to make sense? Do we have enough of a risk appetite to be able to target a longer duration target, have more investments in longer maturities, and are we still meeting our liquidity and safety requirements? And are we okay with that volatility? That discussion we tend to have annually. Generally, what we observe is that most treasuries, this is a really good spot to be in because it's really good at providing liquidity when needed. It gives, it gives the treasury a lot of options.
Okay. And then our annual, is that January? Because I know we started in September or something along those lines.
That's correct. The, the first statements that we cut were in September as, as funds came into the portfolio. But we really didn't implement, I, I want to say that the implementation of the strategy was around October, November. So that, that's, that's what we're calling the inception date, when we really started kicking off. So to give, to give you an idea, you know, income for September was $23,000. Income for October, this is 2021, income for October 2021, $66,000, so tripled. Income for November, 63, a little bit lower. Income for December, now you're 101, it doubled. And then that went up to 221 in March, that went up to 3.5 in, in May of this year. We hit 440 in July, now we're at 545 per month. So that, that's, that's been a good run. You've captured, you've maintained a shorter duration to be able to capture that rising interest rate trend as the Federal Reserve has raised interest rates to slow inflation down by reducing the money supply. The application of this strategy has been, has been very good.
Shown by your graph. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Supervisor Green.
Yeah, thank you. Love pie charts. I saw a zero on the pie chart for local government investments. And a quick question, City of Lakeport recently issued a pension obligation bond as we flattened out our unaccrued, unfunded accrued liability for pension costs. And POBs are kind of a new animal, and I don't know if they popped up on the county's radar at all, but that strategy, and I don't know if the county has examined it either for that matter, but it was an important process for the city. It was hugely important, and I think that bond issue came and went, so it's not like we're looking for people to buy. But this strategy for some of our smaller districts, fire districts, special districts, what's have you, I mean, anybody that has pension costs probably needs to take a look at, at least the possibility of funding it in different ways, and the POBs are one way to do that. So one, are POBs on our radar at all? And is it something we can identify in our strategy? It's like, again, I don't know how many other districts and county are going to be considering these, but if they are, I'd like them to be on our radar. Not saying it'll be a big moneymaker, not saying it'll get up to 0.5% of our investment portfolio, but it would be nice to pay it forward in some respect to help our local governments that are considering POBs and also to reap whatever dividends we can get off those.
So Supervisor Green, to answer your question, they are most definitely on our radar. We do look at POBs. We, one of the projects that we, that we took on when we began this investment program with the ad hoc committee and the treasury, and the Treasury Tax Collector, was to revamp the county's investment policy, to really bring it up to date, to include everything that's allowed by California code through, through 2021, which is the last time we updated it. We try to update it annually. And one of the things that we did is we opened up the investment policy to be able to include municipal securities as allowed by California code. So absolutely, they're on our radar and they are allowed. Now, having said that, not just the, the City of Lakeport's pension obligation bond, but any other municipal issuers of pension obligation bonds or general obligation bonds or revenue bonds, obviously, we look for criteria for them to meet, to, to be able to provide liquidity and safety in the portfolio. We look at, at the size of the issue, how widely it's held, the credit quality, all those factors. But I, I wouldn't say no to any security until I analyzed it and looked at it. But yes, it is on our radar, and we do look for those, and they are allowed in the portfolio. If it makes sense to bring it in vis-à-vis the other opportunities that we have in the portfolio, absolutely, we would, we could bring something like that in.
Thank you.
Supervisor Pyska.
Carlos, I just, I appreciate your guidance on this and being involved in the committee and, and the strategies that you've suggested. This is growth that we haven't ever seen, and I just really appreciate working with you, and I'm looking forward to the January meeting. And, you know, this is just another example of, you know, you pushed this forward, and it was a small investment on our time to put this strategy together, but amazing results and dividends. And so thank you so much for guiding us, and we're in excellent hands.
Supervisor Pyska, this has been a great relationship to work with the county and the Board of Supervisors and the Treasury Tax Collector and the Treasury Tax Collector-elect, the whole team. It's been a lot of hands in this, it's been a good project. It's, I'm, I'm excited to see what this next year is going to bring, not just from an economics perspective, but also just from a growth of the, of the pool.
Yep.
Did you have anything to add, or?
No, I, we don't have anything further to add.
All right.
I do have one quick question. Have we heard anything from our other partners in the investment pool? Or is there a level of excitement from them about the changes that they're seeing and what they're receiving? Or I just have, I haven't heard anything. I've heard the opposite when there's nothing coming in, but I haven't heard the, any comments lately.
I have not heard any comments.
I'll have to check in.
Contact with the Office of Education, and they did seem pleased with the progress of being made.
Awesome. Because it affects more than just us, that's why I ask.
All right. I'll open it up to the public, if there's anyone in the chambers or online that would like to comment on this item on the agenda. And I'm not seeing any hands or anyone coming to the microphone, so I'll bring it back to the board. This is a report, so thank you very much. Thank you for the report, and thank you for the work that you've been doing and the partnership that we have.
Thank you, Supervisor. Thank you, everybody. Have a great day.
We love getting good news from you all the time.
6.3, public hearing, consideration request for hearing in the matter of 8020 High Valley Road Cobb, APN 011040-26. The Crypto Rights Foundation Incorporated, a California nonprofit corporation. And we will be welcoming up Community Development Director Maria Turner and Code Enforcement Manager Marcus Beltramo.
And me too.
Well, he asking it.
Yes, we have to conduct a swear-in. Yes, we have to conduct a swear-in briefly. And so I think we commonly just have you come to the microphone, sir.
I'd like to sit if I had to drive three hours to get yours.
And a lot of other people do, too, so you could sit in the front and then swear in and come to the microphone when you're ready.
Sorry?
A lot of other people do, too, but they usually sit at the front table and come up to the microphone when they're ready.
Do you want me to sit back there?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you. And so if we can, if there's anyone online that would like to swear in, and if you're here on behalf of this item, please raise your right hand and swear in. Sir, you might want to swear in since you'll be, yeah, there you go.
Okay. Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yeah.
Thanks.
Excellent. Okay. Give the floor to you. Maria?
Hello, Community Development Director Maria Turner. I am turning over the presentation to Code Enforcement Manager Marcus Beltramo.
Today, we are here for a request of hearing, which is basically the equivalent of an appeal regarding a notice of nuisance in order to abate that was issued against the property located at 8020 High Valley Road in Cobb, California. The appeal was received on behalf of the Crypto Rights Foundation, Inc., a California nonprofit corporation.
Can I ask the date of that?
Through the presentation?
Well, the presentation will display everything that you'll need to know about this item, and then when it's finished, you can come up and ask questions further or give your insight. Continue on, please.
Pursuant to the Lake County Code, Chapter 13, Article 1, Section 13, 7.1, once a request for a hearing is received, the board will consider the appeal regarding the notice of nuisance in order to abate. The violations, we'll go over that later, but basically, we cited for violation of the open and outdoor storage and violation of Chapter 21, Article 68.4. It's the definition for residential accessory uses and structures. So for this hearing, we did send out a notice. We did meet the statutory requirement for providing that notice. It was sent to the address that we provided by the appellant and based on county records. We did receive two complaints regarding this property. Basically, they alleged cargo containers on the property, persons living in structures or recreational vehicles that didn't meet minimum construction standards. As always, we'd like to give some context of the property here. So again, the zoning for it is rural residential. It is a vacant lot. It's about 0.792 acres in size. Again, this is located in the Cobb area, and this is kind of a panned-out version. There, as you can see, it's off to the right, right there, it's a small section, kind of a zoomed-in photo. And just to kind of give you an outline of the property description, we also included a GIS mapping with the estimated property boundary lines to give full context of the size of the property, or the property that's in question here today, or the subject of the hearing here today. On July 11, 2019, a notice of nuisance in order to abate was issued against the property. Basically, it tried to address the issues of the cargo containers on the property and not being in compliance with the Lake County Code. Here is a recent photo. This is a photo taken on November 4, 2022, of that cargo container. As you can see, it's on the property, there's no improvements. It's been on there for some time, and it's sitting on cinder blocks for footings. This is the best photo we could get of the property from the legal vantage point. So a hearing request was received. The date on the request is August 1, 2019. I think just, I think we need to have, give an explanation to the board here. Consistently, this Code Enforcement Division and the Community Development Department run into these issues. We refer to them as legacy issues, things that have gone on in the past and not have gone unresolved. And part of my job is to move forward with those issues and try to resolve those issues in order to move forward and to attain compliance. This issue was, request was received in 2019. As we kind of go through these things, we discovered the file. We always heard there was an appeal. We never seen, I've never seen the appeal. Then an employee came back from leave, found the file, and then we found the appeal at that time. We decided we had to move forward with this hearing here today in order to take the next steps to attain compliance with the Lake County Code. So again, this is a consistent issue that we face, and you've seen some of these legacy issues in the past, and you'll probably see legacy issues moving forward, but we have to deal with them, we have to get them resolved in order to move forward. The hearing request form that was received, they provided a reason. CRF, Inc. is accused by anonymous of offering no evidence of living in its temporary construction admin office and of having containers on its property. CRF, Inc. is not living in its office. Its containers, which are both storage and building materials, are allowed when permits are in process. But planning has improperly prevented CRF from filing for permits by ignoring unambiguous evidence of legal lot status under subdivision ordinance of September 15, or of 15 September 1971, while refusing to state why it cannot make a timely determination based on that evidence, which it requested and received in good faith in the summer of 2018. At this point, the staff recommends the Board of Supervisors deny the appeal and uphold the notice of nuisance in order to abate dated July 11, 2019, and to direct the property owner to voluntarily abate the violations by removing the cargo containers from the property at a time made certain by the board. And if the violation is not corrected within the time allowed by the board, direct staff to move forward with the county's nuisance abatement process. And at this time, that concludes our presentation.
Any questions from the board? We'll go ahead, and sir, if you'd like to, if you'd like to state something, you can come up to the microphone. Put the microphone right there, sir. There you go.
So I can't sit? Should I let him sit up here?
He's fine.
Yeah. If you wanted to. All right.
At least make sure he's seated.
Yeah. All right. Go ahead, sir. You have the floor.
So my name is Dave. I represent the Crypto Rights Foundation.
What's your last name, if you, for the record, please?
Dave.
Dave, your last name?
Just Dave.
You're just Dave?
For purposes of this hearing, yeah.
I think you have to give your last name as well.
Dell.
Dell, okay, Dave Dell.
Thank you. All right. So first question to Supervisor Pyska, is it?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. When you received our complaint in April of 2021, what action did you take on that?
Ms. Grant?
It's certainly up to your board if you want to engage in a question and answer with the property representative, but procedurally, now is the chance for the representative to set forth the basis for this request for hearing appeal. So you may want to begin with that just to adhere to your standard process. Of course, it's up to your board how you wish to.
No, I think we'll stick to that format that's commonly in place. So if we could just stick to addressing what was given in the presentation, and then address those issues, and then we'll get to the other matters later.
I was going to get to that, but I wanted to have that entered into the record.
Well, it will be, but you could start with the other things first when it comes to the presentation.
Okay. So we purchased the property in 2018, and within a couple of weeks, we went to CDD to begin the process of developing the property for our company. All right? So that was, I'm going to say probably May or June of 2018. And then we also went to Environmental Health, and there's some email about that. And we asked for a soil inspection, I guess, to begin the process of installing the septic system that would go with the simple office that we wanted to build to start development, which would have been a staff residence essentially, with a place for someone to provide office hours to the public, et cetera. So Environmental Health did their soil inspection. Everything was fine, and then CDD interrupted the process and said that they were unable to determine whether or not the property was a legal lot. So as a side note, we have discovered that the seller's agent deceptively presented the property to us, and our real estate agent, who is headquartered in Berkeley, did not pay attention to the fact that the seller's agent had not filled out the information required by law for the seller's agent on the legal lot status. So we discovered this when CDD came back to us and said, we don't know if it's a legal lot. And they gave us no explanation as to why they didn't know. They just said, we don't know, and you can't do anything until it's determined. And then they asked for money and for additional paperwork to be filled out. So we were given a sheet with some information, including the mention of the 1971 ordinance. So we went to the appropriate floor in this building and spoke to the people who maintain the deeds and the parcel maps and that sort of thing, and found everything listed in the ordinance that shows that it is a de facto legal lot. Okay? So this was, let's say at that point, it was probably July 2018. That's more than five years ago now. Or, sorry, no, it's more than four years ago. So we then assumed that since we had met the burden under the ordinance, CDD would of course tell us, okay, go ahead, have your septic system installed and file your building permit. They did not, and we continued multiple times into 2019, and I think also the last one was probably in 2020. On five occasions, we brought in the paperwork that showed that it was a de facto legal lot, and that we would like to begin filing permits and that sort of thing and developing. On each one of those occasions, a CDD employee took the papers that we had presented to them, which included very large font printouts of the parcel descriptions that you could hold up to the light, two sheets, 1970 and 2018, to see that they were exactly identical as required under the ordinance. The deed also records that fewer than four, or four or fewer parcels were created in the subdivision, and shows that we purchased it in 2018, and the previous deed was from 1970, I believe. So we met all of the burdens under the ordinance for a de facto legal lot. Now, on each of the occasions in 2018, I believe two in 2019, one in 2020, or maybe two in 2020, the employee who took our paperwork was, I think, in almost all cases, an assistant planner. And we were told, okay, you know, just giving it a squint test, this looks okay, we'll get back to you with the determination within a few weeks. So on each occasion, we said, great. And on none of those occasions did we hear back from the employee. And on all of those occasions, including one in 2019 that I'll get to in a minute, the employee left the employment of the CDD. And as far as we can tell, none of them ever told anyone that we had given our paperwork that we wanted to build and that we were waiting for an answer. Now, among the CDD employees that we spoke with, there is one who's present today, and that would be Ms. Turner. She was, I think, the second person on our list of five people. I don't know what was the exact date when Ms. Turner left the CDD, but it was shortly after we gave her all the evidence. I'm curious as to how she followed up as she departed the CDD in terms of making sure that the second submission of all those legal documents was correctly placed into the workflow of the CDD.
Supervisor Pyska?
Yeah, so there are two separate issues here. He is trying to get a building permit for his property, but the violation is for having a container on property without a permit. And if you don't have a permit, you can't start moving things onto your property.
Right.
So these are two very separate issues here. We're not talking about how he's going to be getting his permit. We are talking about the violation that we have.
Yeah, and they're tightly related to each other.
County Council can weigh in on that.
Right. They're tightly related to each other, and that's why I'm explaining this briefly. So can
One second, please.
Can I ask Director Turner to tell us what
One second.
She left the CDD in 2019?
One second.
I think the issue that Supervisor Pyska is referring to here, and certainly, you know, in hearings like this, your board can admit evidence that you think may be relevant. You determine later the amount of weight you wish to give the evidence at the time of the hearing. However, Supervisor Pyska is correct that this hearing is about two elements of nuisance, the open and outdoor storage and the substandard dwelling. And unless your board finds it relevant, that difficulty in obtaining a building permit justifies these violations, you can certainly reduce the time within which this argument can be made since it's already ongoing.
Right. All right. So anything else you want to add? We're good. All right, sir.
May I continue?
Yes, you can continue. But let's just stick to the violation.
Would Director Turner respond to my question?
I don't feel it's really relevant when it comes to this, so I think we should just move forward with the violation.
Okay, then I will simply put into the record that we gave all this paperwork to Maria Turner in 2019, and she vanished without telling us that she had left the CDD, and as far as we can tell, never put the paperwork into the record. So there is a failure to provide honest services right there. There are four other such examples. And I feel that's relevant because I think everyone would agree that had we been allowed to continue and file our building permit in 2018 when we went to get it, rather than being prevented to do so without apparently any reason, there would in fact be a standard residential structure on that property, and the contents of those containers would have been used in the building, and those containers would have been emptied out with our office equipment and all the other things that are in them. And the temporary office that we have would have been considered a temporary construction office during the permit period, and we would have been able to build that structure and turn those containers into legalized sheds. turn those containers into legalized sheds and barns and whatnot. So, I guess the point that I'm making here, and I won't belabor it any further, is the fruit of the poisonous tree argument, which is, CDD itself created the conditions for these violations to be possible. We did not. We acted in good faith at every turn. We have done everything that we could to be completely correct. We have filed a complaint after several years of no action by CDD, and we feel it's wildly inappropriate for CDD, given that their four, almost five years of delays have cost us a considerable amount of money now. We feel it's wildly inappropriate for CDD to be now coming back in 2022, having only recently noticed that we filed this appeal three years ago-
Okay.
-in order to resolve the situation. So, from July 2018 until a few days ago, our company, a human rights organization that is trying to be able to hire people in Lake County, which has paid nearly $10,000 in property tax despite being a tax-exempt organization, we think it's relevant for you to acknowledge that these violations, as we have pointed out in our request, in our appeal, are spurious because they're based on quicksand. The CDD essentially violated our rights as a property owner.
We've heard you say that numerous times. Is there anything else you want to add?
Sure. I have some questions.
Well, and there's a question here from Vice Chair Pyska. Go ahead.
So, acting in good faith and moving these things onto our property without a building permit is illegal. So, you've done all of these things for several years. These violations have been there, and you don't have a permit. And I do understand that it's been complicated, and it's been a process, but that is the law. That is how we operate.
Is the ordinance from 1977 also the law?
We're talking about the violation.
I'm just asking a question.
And you don't have a building permit, and you have these things on your property.
The legal lot, the legal lot status is relevant to this violation.
No, these are separate issues. Your building permit and your violation are separate issues.
Okay. So, you refuse to answer my question about what action you took when you received our official complaint letter?
That complaint was about your building permit, not your violations.
Again, you refuse to answer that question, correct, in this hearing?
Correct.
Okay.
Ms. Grant?
Wanted to make sure we had that on the record.
Your board serves as the hearing body here. You're not actually subject to direct and cross-examination during this process.
Right.
Certainly, your board members can ask questions, and Community Development should have the opportunity to respond to the representative for the property owner. Again, those are just basic suggestions. How you wish to handle this is completely up to you.
All right. So, if there's nothing else to state about the violation, we'll go ahead and move forward on this. Is there anything else from Community Development that you would like to add to this or anything of that nature?
I have something further if you-
If it's about the violation and if you're just asking questions to have like a cross-examining thing, that's not going to continue. I mean, you've given us a lot already, and you've kind of talked about the same point, blaming the Community Development Department. We understand and heard you loud and clear on that.
Okay, okay. My question is regarding the face-to-face meeting that Director Turner and I had back, I guess it was in June of this year, because that involved this violation as well as our request for clarification.
Director Turner was not employed here in June.
Oh, sorry. That's right. That was Mary Darby that I met with. And then I met with Director Turner-
Following that.
In July. I can't remember. Is it June or July? I can't. You were newly in office, right? So, there's so much turnover, and I apologize for this, but there's so much turnover. It's hard to keep track of who, you know?
Fully understandable.
Yeah. And we take that into account when we consider the liability that Lake County may have in this case, you know, if there's a complaint filed subsequent. So, but my question about the face-to-face meeting, Director Turner asked me if I had a question for her, and my question would be, given that Director DeLeon, thanks to Supervisor Sabatier, who was chair of the board at the time, who picked up the slack for our supervisor, who, we don't know what happened with the letter that was sent to her, but we know that Supervisor Sabatier responded to our complaint in 2021 and got the attention of Director DeLeon of the CDD, who issued an email determining that we did in fact have a legal lot, de facto legal lot, and claimed that he had consulted with the county surveyor and made the determination, apologized for the inconvenience to our company, and promised to send us a letter so that we could proceed to get a building permit-
Do you have the letter?
-abate the violations.
Again, this is about the building permit.
Did you have, do you have the letter?
My point is that we were given an email promising, the director of the CD promising to finally right all these wrongs, and he left before issuing that letterhead, letter that he had promised, at which point we would have filed a building permit and had everything abated and had the containers cleared up and/or converted into sheds.
I just want to point out that Director DeLeon, at that time, CC'd Environmental Health on that email, and so he could have used that email had he wanted to go and get a permit at that time.
Supervisor Sabatier, after you're finished.
We have a copy of that email.
Yeah, the issue-
As we did CC everybody, he could have taken that email to Environmental Health and started the permitting process, but he didn't.
Actually, I did.
In the spring of 2021.
Yeah, actually, I did. Later in 2021.
I want to slow this down a little bit. Sir, you're not going to win any points by disparaging any of my colleagues.
Oh, I'm not.
All I did was forward an email to a director. I can't take action on things. All I did was push it forward, and then that discussion continued. So, let's not highlight my ability to click forward as a great thing.
Let us finish, and then you retort after.
I also, it's not the first time that I've heard comments from folks, which I denied before, that it's someone else's fault for actions that they've taken. We have to take responsibility for our actions. If there is no permit and something is brought onto the land, there's a problem, and it's not someone else's fault for not providing the permit. There's processes, and there's two parties involved in order to get there. Obviously, that seems to be a sticking point and a work in progress, I hope, to get to that, but that doesn't mean that we can skip steps. I have a couple of questions and I have a couple of concerns because I think I'm getting emails from your community, and they're not talking about 8020 High Valley Road. They're talking about 7900 High Valley Road. So, the issues that the community seems to see a lot more tend to be maybe both properties, but those emails, this is not a resolution today as it's only one out of the potential two. My question, and I just want to make that statement because I don't want the community to think that whatever action we take today, if we choose to resolve this and deal with the container, that it doesn't solve what the community is seeing. I just want to make that statement clear. What happens to the container if it is abated? What is the responsibility of Community Development? Because from what I'm understanding, the containers are not sitting there empty. They have supplies in them, and I know that there's definitely some legal, I don't want to say ramification, legal processes on what to do with other people's stuff. It's not like you're going in there and it's a trash pickup like you've oftentimes brought to us where it's obvious that just needs to be brought to the dumps. Here, this is stuff that was prepared for whatever they wanted to build. So, that's my number one question. And number two, and I'm going in the weeds, is office space allowed in rural residential?
So, I think it's a two-part question. I think the second part's better reserved for the director to address that. The first part of the question, though, we do have, we've been in communication with County Council regarding abatements and the taking possession of private property and the dissolution of, you know, storage fees, the dissolution of how to handle that private property, how long we have to handle it, how we have to handle it, secure it, and then if it's not recovered or retrieved, how to basically get rid of it. So, we have spoken to County Council on another abatement of this issue, but this is an issue that we're seek, gonna probably seek further clarification and guidance from County Council because as we get into more of these abatements involving personal property, we do have a duty to operate appropriately within the law, and I think we need, there currently is no policy in place, and we are forming and shaping that policy because we anticipate future abatements involving personal property. And again, our job is to get it right and do it the right way and to be fair. That's all I have for now.
Question number two regarding the proposed use. The notes that I was able to find for crypto rights from former Director Darby did not include a project description, and the conversation that, the conversations so far that I've had with Mr. Dell have also not included a project description. That being said, rural residential, the purpose of rural residential is to allow for primary residential use as well as limited agriculture. I scanned through Article 27 while the board was taking testimony and did not find a use for an office or office park or any employment outside of labor or farm labor-related issues. So, that would be a question going forward. It would be helpful if I had an actual project description, but I immediately don't see an allowed use.
But isn't the RV on the other parcel? It's not on this parcel. So, there's two parcels. This hearing is about the notice of violation only on this one parcel where there is one container box.
Supervisor Green?
Thank you. A couple of process questions. One, it looks like we're operating under Chapter 13 generally in for today's hearing, 13.7 hearing procedures. Okay. Which is all kind of written on the assumption that appeals will be timely heard. I'm kind of concerned, not on the specifics of this case necessarily, but for all these quote-unquote legacy cases, and Ms. Grant may need to weigh in on this, but granted, CDD did not provide timely service in processing this appeal. Granted, also, the appellant did not spend a whole lot of time beating the bushes to get this done. And there's no clarity in the code that says what would happen if we linger on with this hearing for three-plus years. So, what I saw in the evidence presented so far had basically a photo of the storage container taken from a public right-of-way, I believe, and-
No, it's from a private road.
And I didn't see anything as far as the residential use that was being claimed in this. So, I want to make sure if we are proceeding on this, that one, we can drag out an appeal hearing for three-plus years and then try to go to the merits of the case as it was presented three years ago. And then I want to make sure that the evidence presented is all we have because all I've seen so far is the one storage container. So, that may be a violation of sorts, but I don't know that I'm ready to go process that right now. And just one last question for the appellant. I want to put him on record, although you were reluctant to put your last name on there. If you are representing yourself as the authorized representative of crypto rights, would you state your full name, and would that in fact be Dave Del Torto?
That's correct, but I am an officer of the corporation.
All right. Thank you.
All right.
Just a question on the timeliness, not on the merits of the appeal, but the timeliness and the processing and the due process rights in particular of an appellant who has waited three years to come before this board.
Ms. Grant?
Well, Supervisor Green is correct that the ordinance doesn't provide a particular timeline for this. Three years is certainly a lengthy period of time, and Code Enforcement in their testimony today was very clear about that delay to your board to make it known that this has been hanging for quite some time. You're also correct, Supervisor Green, that you have for present time one photograph. If your board, for example, finds that the evidence presently needs to be made more current, if you need additional information, you have a number of choices. You can certainly grant the appeal. You can deny the appeal and move forward with abatement, but give a period of time for staff and the property owners to try to come to terms with some of the outstanding issues. Or you could continue the hearing and request that additional evidence be provided for a later determination by your board. So, those are the choices before you now.
Thank you.
Can I just backtrack? So, the photo is a recent photo. It's not from 2019?
Yeah, the photo is date-stamped. It's taken on November 4th, I believe. If I'm able to pull it up, I could show the photo with the date stamp on it.
But it wasn't from 2019, right?
No. The photos from 2019 were not of the 8020 property. They were the 7900 property, which is a neighboring property that is also owned by the Crypto Rights Foundation. So, they were not adequate. So, we went back out and took a photo of this container, and this is the best photo we could get of that container.
But it is not representative of the conditions as they were on site 2019 by definition?
I cannot directly testify to that because I wasn't present when the issue, when the notice was issued and the evidence was collected. I did not see any information in the file that reflects the container that is there now.
What information is in the file that you can present as evidence of the conditions at the time?
I cannot.
Thank you.
All right. May I comment?
Yes, if we can keep this last comment brief, appreciate it.
Sure. I would just like to point out that we have been in regular communication with CDD and Code Enforcement for the entire time since we purchased the property, and also that when we were informed that we had a container that had been placed too close to the private road that runs through all of the properties inside the geysers, we did in fact move that container away from the road as we had been requested to do. And I would also like to, just as a side note, point out, the anonymous complainant is the source of the valley fire ignition.
I think that complainant is on a different parcel.
Yeah, and moving the container is on the other parcel, too. This is just the one parcel.
Yeah, we're just talking about the specific parcel noted in this.
Right.
So, the other one you're mentioning-
I'm just pointing out that we have made good faith efforts all along to do what we reasonably could do, not to offend anyone overly with the unfortunate situation of the protracted storage of our corporate belongings, our office equipment, computers, some of which may have been damaged by years of storage in those containers. We have continued to try to do whatever we reasonably could do with our volunteers. We're all volunteer. Obviously, we're a nonprofit human rights organization.
You just said you're corporate, so I mean, are you-
Yeah, we're a nonprofit human rights corporation.
Okay.
Yeah. So, I think anyone would be hard-pressed to impugn our good faith efforts. That's just what I'd like to say about that. The other thing I would point out is that the one container that's on 8020 has been moved since that original complaint was filed, and we filed the appeal for it in 2019, I guess it is now. It hasn't been moved very far, but we did have to move it because we have been attempting to, in good faith again, to produce conditions whereby the whole situation could be resolved. And if I may- And if I may
This is the last point, please.
Sure. In the, in the letter that our CFO sent to Supervisor Piska last week, we proposed a resolution to this as we have in the past. And the resolution is really quite simple. First, we'd like what Supervisor De Leon promised us. I will prepare a letter to you on official county letterhead to tell us that the, you know, the basis for his decision, working with the county surveyor, was that the
We understand the crux of that. What's point two?
Property is de facto legal lot as we
What's, what's number two? Because you, we understand that.
Right. The second thing, well, in the resolution, there were four bullet points for
I can enter that into the record.
Piska.
It's four different threats.
Okay.
That's a very pejorative way to characterize
Well, if you can just continue.
A request for resolution. That's what the letter was.
But again, it's about the building permit and not the violation.
Well, indeed, indeed. So, but it was about the violation because one of the things we requested was the immediate abatement of the violation in recognition of the fact that we have been waiting for years to be allowed to build the required residential structure, which would in fact abate everything. And we're still prepared today to proceed, you know, with, we have now settled on hiring a company that will provide us with a prefabricated structure, come and
Okay.
Put it down on the property.
Noted.
Assault.
Thank you.
So we asked
Can you come to a close?
Yeah, we asked for the abatement of the violations, which we don't feel are proper given that CDD created the conditions. We asked to be given time to complete a residential structure.
Okay.
And that's the crux of it. We want to be able to complete the development, the preliminary initial development of the property that we purchased in 2018.
Okay. And so with that, we understand that it's noted. And there, there's not anything else to close?
I would like to make one comment, you know, in order to get the zoning clearance for any type of structures and to get any building permits. I believe the policy is, in this case, is to clear the violations before issuing those clearances and building permits.
Yes.
Or go, our request So we would have to clear the violations, then we can move forward in the process.
All right. Thank you for that. Is there anyone else in the public that's sworn in that has any comments on this? Not hearing or seeing anyone online or anything like that. We'll bring it back to the board, close the further discussion unless there's anything else from community developments at all. Okay, with that, we'll close the discussion on this. And if there's any other further discussion by the board or if there's action to take, we'll go forward from there.
Mr. Chair, I move that we uphold the notice of nuisance in order to abate dated 7/11/2019 and direct the property owner to voluntarily abate the violations by removing the cargo container from the property at a time made certain by the board. And if the violation is not corrected within the time, what should the time be? Two weeks?
Normally, your board does give 30 days. You can give more if you like.
30 days? Is that fine with them?
That's
Yeah. Then direct staff to move forward.
Second.
Supervisor Green, did you have something to add? I see your pen up.
I'd like to offer an amendment.
No, there's a motion in a second.
There's no amendment that can be made by you. It's only by the board, so.
Motion, second. We do get to comment before we vote, right? Generally?
You can right now, yes.
Okay. Just for the record, the appellant does badly conflate the issue of the building permit, the lot status with what is before this board today. If you're going to pursue this farther, I would recommend you get a better understanding of that. As far as what is before us today on the appeal, no evidence has been presented. There may be evidence of a current violation that would be worthy of a new notice of violation and notice to abate. Certainly would support that going out today, but can't support this. As it stands, it's not disparaging on CDD in any way to note that that department has been through tremendous change in recent years. And I am aware of any number of issues that have been sidelined, lost, what have you. So that my vote is going to reflect that, you know, and as all these other legacy issues come, you know, you're going to have to choose your battles on what amount of evidence you're basing your decisions on. Because again, our decisions are appealable, too. So just pointing that out.
Thank you. Did you want to add something to you, Supervisor Sabate?
I just have a quick question because I'd like to better understand what has been provided to you from county council as far as what is this going to cost us? Let's say he can't move the container and we move it for him. What is our cost? Where are we, what is exactly our responsibilities with that? Because I'd like to better understand to know that we're ready for that rather than saying, don't go ahead and do it, and we're not ready for that.
Ms. Grant?
If I may?
Yes.
Thank you. These conversations have not been with me, but with attorneys in my office, but it's my understanding that these are relatively introductory-type discussions. So I have not seen anything come across my desk regarding a policy or procedure that I would certainly have to see before my office recommended it. So I think these are just precatory discussions. And so I could have said this much shorter, Supervisor Sabate, but I wanted to put that out there. There is no definitive process that's been recommended by my office at this point. And I would very much recommend that my office do recommend one because there are a number of legal issues associated with this kind of action.
So I struggle with saying, do something that we don't necessarily currently have the process or capability to do. And while this is an obvious, there is a violation. I don't disagree with what Supervisor Green brings up, which is, is it the same container that we, three years ago, said was the violation? Because I, we've been here and we've heard from county council, new violations require new notice. And if we have no pictures or anything to substantiate that 2019 is exactly what we're looking at in 2022, that's a bit of a struggle. And I know from the neighbors who's, who have emailed us, and I'm certain everybody received it, that this is not the issues that that community is dealing with. And so I, I don't want to set a precedence by saying we deny, because if we deny, it's going to look weird if we approve the exact same issue at a later time. But I also feel like approving it is putting you in a awkward position on what is your next steps if the appellant is not able to actually abate it on his own and we have to make that happen. And we can't make it happen until we get all our ducks in a row. Now, it's not moving mountains to make that possible, but this is not the only thing that we're working on either.
Ms. Grant, and then I see Marcus, you were going to come to the microphone. Go ahead, Ms. Grant.
Yes, and I'm sorry to intrude on your motion, but since it's still up for discussion, if I may.
Yes.
You can certainly move forward with your motion. If you do have these questions that's going to hinder your board's vote in this matter or any of your members feel that way, if you want to continue it to the sixth, we could have better answers for you with regard to the impound process. If you don't feel that's relevant to your decision today, then certainly it's, it's just that, not relevant. But if you do, we could certainly commit, my office could certainly commit to giving you a legal outline of how that is and work with community development in that regard.
Go ahead, Marcus. You were going to stay some.
And I appreciate that. Obviously, we do need to work with county council to develop this policy because we want to do it the right way. And I have no recollection that the county or code enforcement has abated these type of issues in the past and there was a policy in place. But I do want to go to the issue of evidence. I believe the appellant did testify in his own admission that the cargo container was there in 2019 and that he moved it slightly back away from the road. So I believe there is evidence on the record
No. Different container.
We can, go ahead.
Okay, then I think that's something that needs to be clarified. And I think the appellant should explain if the container is there is the same container that was there in 2019. And where did that container in 2019 go?
All right. I'll allow you to just answer that question.
Very, I'll be brief. The container that's pictured was brought in after this complaint was filed and placed on that other parcel, 8020. And at that time, we were fully expecting that the paperwork that we had brought to the planner, Ms. Turner at that time, would, would result in us being granted the legal lot status so that we could proceed with the permit. So we had a $20,000 bill that we were facing for continued storage of containers at a site on Treasure Island in the bay. And we decided to bring the container up since we were anticipating an imminent ability to build with the materials and the equipment that's in that container. That container was then moved slightly in 8020. Sorry, in 2020.
2020, got it. Okay, so is there any other discussion?
Just a point of order, Mr. Chair. I believe that last testimony, while appropriate, probably we should reopen the public hearing to accept it. Just defer to Ms. Grant on that. Certainly want to hear the testimony. We want the board to acknowledge that we're accepting it in the proper context.
And I stated I would allow his input on that question.
I don't think we officially close.
He's not a, he's not a, he's in, he's the appellant. He's not the public that's sworn in.
Well, I think what you're saying, Chair, is that, that was your intention, was to reopen the public hearing to receive just that testimony. Is that correct?
Was basically is, and
Was there any objection from the other board members
No.
To that?
All right.
Then I think, I may also wish to say that I don't know that when code enforcement does these types of abatements, that they mark the container. In other words, it's, it's a cargo box container. I don't know that there's any way that community development could ever tell if they went out one week and saw another container the next, how in the world would they be able to tell it was exactly the same container? I think what we're talking about is the circumstance on the property that gives rise to that violation.
All right. Okay, with that, is there any further discussion from the board?
May I ask a question?
No, we're finished. So I have a motion on the floor? All right.
And a second.
Do we?
Yeah, we have a second.
All right, so I have a motion in a second. So I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
All right, motion passes 3-2. And so with that, we'll close the slide and thank you for the presentation, and we'll move forward to our next item on the agenda. But before that, we're going to take a brief break. So we'll come back at 10:50. Thank you. All right. We're coming back. We could come back and move on to our next item on the agenda. Sir, we're going to come into session here. So item 6.4, public hearing continued from November 8, 2022, hearing of, hearing of appeal of notice of violation and notice of nuisance in order to abate property owner Thomas Carter, location 162200 Point Road, Upper Lake, APN 02200105. Johanna, if you could swear some folks in so we can move on with this item.
All right. I wonder if Joan's gonna do.
Yes, Mary Jane, I see her hand up as well. There we go.
All right.
No, good, it's good, it helps.
Okay, so with your right hand raised, do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes.
All right, Mary Jane said yes. All right, so we'll go ahead and give the floor to community development and move forward from there. Yeah, so you could sit, if you want to sit up there like the last gentleman, that's fine, too. Or you could sit at the table and just wait till they're finished with the presentation and then come up. It's up to you. Yeah.
Thank you. I'm Mariaa Turner, Community Development Director. I will turn it over to Code Enforcement Manager Marcus Beltramo.
Good morning again to the board. My name is Marcus Beltramo. I'm the manager of the Code Enforcement Division. And again, we're here today for hearing requests, the equivalent of an appeal. Before I start
Yeah, we're not sharing on the Zoom.
Oh, sorry about that.
There it is.
Before I start, hopefully the board had a chance to review the attachments and the documents. If not, I'd like to provide a copy of the appellant's reason for this appeal here today just so, because I don't believe, it's at length. It would take me a while to read it onto the record, so I just want to make sure the board had a chance to review the appellant's reason for this appeal or this request for hearing today. And if not, I can provide a copy of that hearing request. I just think it's
It's in the package.
Yeah, it's in the packet right here.
I just want to make sure everyone had a chance to review it because I'm, I do not anticipate reading it into the record due to the length of it unless required to do so or requested to do so.
It's a letter that's in
Yes. I just want to make sure everyone had a chance to read the reason there.
Right.
Also, if need be, we do have a permit technician from the Community Development Department. She works in the Building Safety Division. She is knowledgeable and has, is an expert in regards to the fees we charge for building permits. And she did some kind of mock, kind of a permit fee kind of analysis to kind of give some context to the situation. So if there are questions about how to calculate permit fees and things of that nature, she is here to answer those questions only in that regards, regarding as to the calculation of building permit fees. And she did have direct involvement with the appellant, Mr. Thomas Carter. That being said, let's, I will begin the presentation. So today, we're here in regards to the property 162200 Point Road. That's in Upper Lake, California. Pursuant to Lake County, Chapter 13, Article 1, Section 13-7.1, upon the receipt of a request for a hearing of notice, the board shall hear testimony regarding the notice of nuisance in the order to abate that was issued. The board can make a decision pending the review and hearing of that evidence. So we did mail out a hearing notice. We did mail it out in meeting the statutory requirements providing a notice for this hearing here today. It was sent to Mr. Carter, I believe via email and regular mail. Property is, the property owner is Thomas Carter. Current, according to county records, he's 33.3, 30, sorry, 33.33% ownership. Jamie Allison, I apologize if I mispronounced the name, Serandano, has a 33.33% ownership in the property. And Olivia Carter has a 33.34% ownership in the property. The property is zoned rural lands. It's approximately 20, a little more than 20 acres. And currently situated on the property, which is the subject of this hearing today, is a primary dwelling measuring approximately 24,000 square feet, an accessory residential dwelling of approximately 525 square feet, and an accessory structure that's claimed to be ag, a barn, which is claimed to be ag exempt, although we have no record of formal paperwork being issued for it being an ag exempt structure. Therefore, we believe it's something that requires, requires a permit. I'm sorry, I think I misstated earlier. The primary dwelling is 2,400 square feet, not 24,000 square feet. So I apologize. Here's a site map. This is taken from Google. It's in a remote area. Here are the site photos. This was taken over a period of time by our building, various building inspectors and code enforcement officers. As you can see, there's the main structure there on the left, a kind of a zoomed out As you can see, there's the main structure there on the left, a kind of a zoomed out photo there on the right, additional photos of that structure, the primary structure, I believe, is what the one on the left is. We did go through a process here. We did issue sufficient notification in various forms. And it's probably best we do give a history here, because that, the history is material to the subject here today. And approximately to December 2018, 2019, a building permit was issued for the property, but for a foundation only, not for an entire structure, only for a foundation only. This is a practice that is no longer continued in our department, except in special circumstances at the discretion of the chief building official. On July 2, 2020, a notice of expired permit was mailed, letting the property owners know that the building permit had expired. On October 25, 2021, a stop work order was posted on the property. On October 27, 2021, the stop work order letter, a stop work order letter was mailed to the property owner. So the stop work order was posted on the property, a letter informing the property owners of the violation, the issues occurring on the property, and the fact that a stop work order had been issued. That letter was mailed on October 27, 2021. On December 8, 2021, a second stop work order letter was mailed informing the property owners that the, there was construction occurring on the property, there were not permits, according to our county records, and that work needs to cease and permits need to be obtained. On February 28, 2022, a notice of noncompliance was recorded on title for the property. Basically, the point we're trying to iterate here is that the issues were made known to the property owners, it was made known to the property owners, the county had it issued with what was being conducted, and that build construction was occurring without the proper permits first being issued. Code enforcement, the issues were referred over to code enforcement on February 28, 2022. A notice of nuisance in order to abate was issued for building without permits and failed to be issued a certificate of occup, they should say occupancy, not a certificate of compliance, a certificate of occupancy, which means the building is, can be properly occupied. Again, we issued a second notice on April 20, 2022, and we issued a notice of violation for the same issues cited before, building without permits. That's a violation of the California Building Code, excuse me, in Chapter 5, which the county adopts, and a certificate of occupancy, which is also contained in the California Building Code, which the county adopts under Chapter 5 in the Lake County Code. On June 15, 2022, we issued a third set of notices, a notice of violation and a notice of nuisance in order to abate, citing the same issues. Basically, construction without permits, permits are required, and a certificate of compliance. The first two notices were issued only for the main primary dwelling. It was only later, as we issued these final notices, that we discovered there were additional structures on the property that were unpermitted or not, had not first obtained the proper permits, and that would be the accessory dwelling unit, the residential accessory dwelling unit of 525 square feet approximately, and this barn that was, that they, the claim is that it has nonexempt status.
Just a quick clarification. You're showing us the date, June 15. Are you saying on June 15 is when you noticed the other buildings?
So prior to June 15 is when I discovered there was additional structures on the property. So we identified there's additional structures, and then we issued the notice on June 15, 2022.
So there's separate notice of violations for the primary and the additional structures that were found at a later time?
These notices here are superseding notices. I apologize, they don't say superseding on them, but they are superseding notices.
Okay, so it like started over?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
I think the point that should be, that's material here, is that there were two notices issued prior, letting them know that there was an issue, there were violations, and this, and that there was requirements of the property owner to take a certain action to correct those issues. So that's how we look at the first two notices as maybe a due process requirement or part of due process or further notification. We're letting you know, we're letting you know of these issues and what you can do to correct those issues. An appeal or a request for hearing notice was received from the appellant. You have that document there. Hopefully, you did have time to read that document. To give you a, to paraphrase, basically, when the property owner, Mr. Carter, tried to come in and get permits for the rest of the structure, the outside of the foundation, this was approximately November, December of 2000, I think 2019, if I recall correctly. At that time, they told him what the permit fees were. He did not want to pay the permit fees at that time. It's my understanding from Mr. Carter that he received an, and I'll let Mr. Carter further explain this, or his understanding of the chronology here as well. But my understanding from him is that he got an estimate from the Building Safety Division that permits would be around $4,000. My understanding is he went to his insurance company, let them know that information, and then when he came back in 2019, the fees jumped to about approximately $17,000. And at that time, he did not wish to, at the time he submitted his plans and his application, he did not wish to pay the permit fees at that time, and the structures were then constructed or erected. So again, these are estimates, but we believe that they are close approximation and estimates that could give you a fair idea. So we did these calculations for a 2,466 square foot, single-family dwelling and a 788 square foot garage. The fees come out to about 17, approximately $17,115.57. This does not include any penalties for not first obtaining the permits. Under the master fee schedule, if you construct something without a permit, we can double fee you for the permit. So that 17,000 number is just the permit to build, to allow construction of the single-family dwelling. For the 525 square foot ADU that's being used for residential purposes, it's my understanding Mr. Carter's son lives in this structure, the permit fee would be approximately $1,981.88. And for the barn, if it's determined that it does not have the proper ag exempt requirements and documentation, the permit fees for that would be $2,719.35. And again, I wish to reiterate, these are just the fees for the permit if they had been obtained properly. These do not include penalties and fees.
So that's incorrect? That says includes penalty, does not include?
So where it says penalty is?
It seems like it should not include, because 17,000?
Oh, I apologize. I misspoke. I apologize. The contained in the 17,000 is the penalty of $10,211.57. I apologize. Thank you for pointing that out for me. So basically, the permit fee would be around $7,000, $8,000 for a single-family dwelling in the garage.
I have an additional question to that, because I haven't seen it in the breakdown, and maybe it's possible I missed it. I can't imagine that school and fire mitigation fees are involved in that number, and I just want to make sure that there's more to it than just maybe what CDD requests for permit fees, and want to make sure everybody is accounted for when really recognizing what is the total cost.
I believe, and our permit tech can probably testify to this, but it's just straight permit fee, just a basic permit fee.
So not accounting?
No, you have to go to the school, and you have to go to the fire department to pay those.
Typically, for fire rebuilds, also, the school and the fire department credit you for the square footage fees that you'd already paid.
Gotcha.
So if anything, if there was an enlarged footprint, there might be further fees, but they would have gotten credit for that. They don't pay those in our department.
Yeah. And so to kind of give some comparison, there is the dispute here today. My understanding of the issue and question here today is regarding the permit fees. And so we tried to find comparable properties around the same period of time, around the approximately same square footage, and we, for permits that were issued, and we tried to get, try to get pulled properties that are similar and comparable to show you what the permit fees were, and to show that the permit fees that were requested when Mr. Carter submitted his application in late 2019, that the fees are in line with what other property owners and properties were being charged for construction. And I don't, I'm not sure, I need to read every single line there, but I think you should review it. And again, I believe they are comparable properties that give you a point of reference or something to measure by what fees, what the, what charges were being made for building permit fees around the same time Mr. Carter was attempting to apply for a building permit.
Can I ask one quick question? Can you go back one page? Okay, I'm confused. That it says includes penalty, $10,211.57. Is that the permit fee? Because the next page is $10,211.57 for the permit fee. So I'm not sure which one's the penalty and which one's the?
So the penalty is the $10,211.57. So his permit would have been around seven, a little more than $7,000.
Okay.
Because, yeah.
I'm a little confused, but that's okay.
Yeah.
And so can I ask, at the time, he would have, if done properly, or according to what you're stating, that he would have paid $7,000 or so?
Our, again, our estimate based upon the fees that, the percentage of fees that were being charged at that time, it's based on construction costs, is that he would owe the county approximately $7,000 to $8,000 at that time for the building permit fees for the single-family dwelling.
All right. Okay, so we can continue with that. Sir, once he finishes, we'll move forward with your statements.
So at this time, staff recommends the board of supervisors uphold the code enforcement notice of violation and notice of nuisance in order to abate and direct the property owner to pay the permit fees and any penalties, or voluntarily abate all unpermitted structures by first obtaining a demolition permit. If not done so in a period of time determined by the board of supervisors, we recommend direct, the board to direct staff to move forward with the imposition of administrative penalties, and if necessary, pursue abatement of all unpermitted structures. And that's the conclusion of our presentation.
All right. Any other questions for staff before I open it up to Mr. Carter? Go ahead, supervisor.
Yeah, again, I apologize, new kid on the block, and I'm not sure we're mixing and matching improperly, but I do want to distinguish between the last hearing, where it was very clearly under Chapter 13, and our nuisance abatement process. Here it seems we are Chapter 5 under building regulations with a little bit of a notice of violation ordered to abate in there, but it looks like the appellant is going to be talking about fees. I see a much different compliance process in the building regs than I do for a garden variety, public nuisance, and so this question might be for staff or for county council. But, you know, I'm seeing in this part of it, a building appeals board that I haven't heard of ever meeting, and then those hearings can be appealed to this board of supervisors. I don't have any knowledge that a appeal as to the fees being requested was ever filed, but it's also pretty unclear which appeals process was presented to the appellant. So can you just clarify where we're at? Are we looking more in this particular hearing in a Chapter 5, Section 5-14 kind of situation? Do we have a hybrid with Chapter 13 and a notice of violation in order to abate? Where are we at here?
We also cited a violation of Chapter 13, Section 13, Article 1, 13-3.1E5, which means any, if the premises are operated or maintained or anything done contrary to Chapter 5 and Chapter 21, that is considered a public nuisance. So we did cite a public nuisance code, and I do not believe there is a appeals board under Chapter 5. I believe the board of supervisors has, and I'll let county council clarify this if this is not correct, but I believe the board of supervisor has taken that responsibility for any appeals that are referenced in Chapter 5.
That's Ms. Grant's shaking her head, yes.
Well, I see it in the statute. If there's a deference of authority to this board, is that by resolution that doesn't appear in the code? I do see a distinct reference to a building board of appeals.
The board sits as the building board of appeals. They use, you used to appoint other persons. There was, I believe, and I'm speaking only from recollection, there was a difficulty in getting volunteers and regular attendants, because the meetings were sporadic at best and quite infrequent. So at one point, your board determined to take over that function and sit as that body. At least, again, that's my recollection. I'm happy to look it up, but that's what I can recall here.
I'm just looking at, part of the code that says whoever is sitting as the board of appeals, that decision by that body would be appealed to this board. So there may be some cleanup work to do on that. Thank you.
All right. Anything else before I see that Mary Jane's hand up? And also, Mr., would you like to speak briefly?
As you can see by, is this on?
Yes, yes.
By his own information, he has many of his facts.
You state your name on the record?
Tom Carter.
Okay, thank you.
I'm the owner of 162200 Point Road.
All right.
And many of Mr. Beltramo's facts are wrong. On June 15, I'm the one that gave him the information of all my structures on my property. I do have a ag farm exempt building for my barn before the fire, and I agree with Mr. Beltramo that I should probably change that, because I'm not doing so much ag in that building, but I do have a permit for that. I do have a permit for my foundation that I did get signed off by Keith, your building inspector, who ended up passing away. My building fees, when I, if I would have gotten my building permit on the day that I lost my house to the fire, my fees would have been about $4,000. I went to the head of the building department at the time and asked if I could do an as-built drawing of buildings and drawings, and I was given permission to do that, and I started with my foundation. If you've read my letter, you can see that there was other people that I let my architect proceed with drawing for them that were more of a desperate position than I was, because I had permission to start building and had my foundation. I have a, I have a case full that I can pull out and individually show you of permits and plans and soil tests and asbestos tests. In the year it took me to get my plans drawn and my engineering and my Title 24 and my sprinkler systems and all the new codes, in that year, the gal you had working here, Mike Lynn, raised the prices, and now my permit was $18,000 instead of about $4,000. And that's when I protested that I don't feel that I should have to pay that. I don't, my, I did not call my insurance company after, like Mr. Beltramo stated, my insurance company called the building department, and the building department at the time in the beginning told them how much the fees were. During that time, they, they're, they more than quadrupled. There's laws on the books that say you can't charge more than it costs to administrate these fees, and I want to see why these fees went so high in one year's time. I want to understand why Middletown was given a waiver on their fees from the fire. I went to the fire department and the road department and the schools, all those, got all those signed off. When I went back to turn in my plans, they made me go sign them off again, and I can't understand why. I'm signed off by the health department. They made me go to every agency that I have to sign off again to get the same exact signatures that I had. I've complied with everything. I'm a general contractor my whole life. I've complied with everything that everybody's asking me to do. I just want to know why these fees were raised so high that now I'm expecting. I got ahold of, I tried to call Mr. Crandall, and we played phone tag for a while. It was through the holidays, so I understand. Then I got ahold of Carol Hutchinson, and Carol Hutchinson was going to come to the board. I've kept in communication with Dana. I tried to. I tried to pay to have my plan checks reviewed to get ahead of the game here, but I was asked if I prom, promised to pick up my plans after they were reviewed, and I said, no, not at this rate. I want to know why the rate has gone so high. Now, the previous board fired Mike Lynn, but they didn't reverse anything that she did. Well, our fees are now higher than Napa County, and I was told that we had to raise our fees here to get in line with the counties around us. Well, we're higher than Napa County now, and we're not Napa County. We're not Minasino County. We're a very poor county, and I want to know why the county feels like it costs so much to come out. Basically, I'm going to have about three inspections on my house, and they're telling me it's going to cost $6,000 an inspection for a guy to come out and look at my jobs. And my, my house is so overbuilt from what the plans are. There's no issue about any of that, and I know a lot of you don't know me here, but this community knows me really well. I've built most of the commercial projects on the north end of this lake, and so many people's houses, there's too numerous to mention here. So I'm asking that the board either give me the same waiver that you gave Middletown, and I have a consultant on Zoom, I hope today, I'm not sure, Mary Jane. She's been very ill, so I don't know if she's been able to make it here.
She's on, and she has her hand up.
So yeah, I asked Mr. Beltramo for the dates of when all of these fees were raised during that year, and he promised me they would be in the report that went to you guys and that I would get a copy of that report, but they weren't, they aren't in there. I didn't get a copy of the report. I got a copy of the report when the public got a copy of the report. So it's not like I haven't been trying to. I'm, I'm not trying to get over any, anything. I've been trying to, I have a briefcase full of stuff I've been trying to do, been trying to do everything legal the right way. I just don't feel like I should pay these fees that I didn't get paid for in the first place. And as far as the dates, I think Mary Jane has all the dates when all these fees were raised. So at best, if I can go back to the original fees that I should have paid, or if Middletown got waivers, why don't I get a waiver too?
All right. Before I think we get further into that, should I, should allow Mary Jane, she has her hand up. So if you'd like to unmute Mary Jane, and if you have anything to add to that, it'd be good. There we go.
Okay, good morning. I may lose my voice, but I'll do the best I can. One of the fact that seems to be kind of skittered around here is the fact that Mr. Carter lost his house to a disaster, to the largest fire that we had in Lake County in 2018. This was not a choice of his, but indeed, it was a disaster. And as we all know, during the series of fires that we've had in Lake County since 2015, insurance companies tend not to fully reimburse their insureds to the costs that are current. The, and during the valley fire, the board did waive fire fees as well as school fees were waived by the school boards up to and including the previous square footage that was destroyed during the disaster. When Tom came to me, and I believe it was 2019 after I left the county, he said, what can I do about this? I said, well, the only action that can be taken is an appeal to the board of supervisors to waive or modify the fees that stand right now. Only the board has the authority to waive or modify fees. So that's when Mr. Carter went to Carol Hutchinson and asked for a meeting with the board, which never happened. And then things went forward, kind of snowballed with the notice of nuisance, notice of abatement, notice of violation, and so forth. When in fact, Mr. Carter always agreed to get building permits, he submitted for them. He had the plans drawn, and everything was in order except for the amount of the fees. And that's what his appeal here is today, is about the amount of fees which only the board can waive. He's not refusing to get permits. He has tried to comply all along, and he's just asking for the board's discretion to look at the fees that are being imposed, especially not just the fees that are imposed, which was some $7,000, but the imposition of penalties, which is allowed by code. But in my knowledge, from being building official from 1997 through 2007, then from 19, excuse me, 2017 to 2019, those fees have never been imposed on somebody that was willingly trying to get building permits. So Mr. Carter would be, as he said, willing to pay the fees that were in place at the time that the house was destroyed, the house and buildings, including a very large workshop and his tools that allowed him to carry on his business as a contractor. That would be a fair decision in my mind and Mr. Carter's mind, but the board can also waive those, those penalties as well. And again, building permit fees are allowed to be set by, by local jurisdictions according to state law and building codes. However, those fees may not produce a, excuse me, I've got a little bit of brain fog here. Those fees may not include making a profit. They do allow for a reserve to continue to provide services during times when the building permit fees are not incoming as much as they have during the years. At one time, the building department did have a reserve of $1 million. Money was well spent during, that was when I left in 2007. Money was spent on a variety of technology and things to assist the department in servicing fees in a better manner. In 2017, when I returned to the building department, there was a deficit, and at that time, of course, the building permit fees were looked at. At that time, it was one and a half percent of the building valuation based on the ICC standards. Shortly thereafter, the director that was in charge at that time, there was no building official, sought to raise the fees. They raised it to 2% of the building valuation, which seemed like a small amount, only a half a percent, when indeed, it was actually a 25% raise in the building permit fees. Shortly thereafter, in 2018, early 2018, it went from 2% to 3%, which was a 50% raise in fees. The board approved it at that time, and in addition to Mr. Carter, there was a number of complaints regarding the new fee structure, and the director at the time, Mike Lynn, felt that it was a nexus in there, it was okay to do that, and even though I disagreed as building official, it went through, and we had a number of complaints regarding that. That being said, back to Mr. Carter, he is a victim of a disaster. He's willing to pay the fees that were enforced at the time and, and should not be held accountable as a violation and fees that, that, or a violation fees, and that should be waived by the board as well. Thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, Mary Jane. Any questions from the board?
I have a question. When you, yeah. So settling with the insurance company, did you do replacement or actual?
Actual.
Yeah, because if you do replacement...
I, I, I got my full coverage, but...
Right.
And even in the two previous years, I raised my insurance in the last two previous years before the fire. So for, I got what our actual coverage was. Part of the problem, of course, has been construction costs that went up almost 400% in some cases. So once we started building, it just got crazy. Although I'm lucky, I milled a lot of my own wood. I have sawmills and stuff, so I was able to control the cost that way. But it just, that's been part of the problem for sure.
Right, but when you do the replacement avenue, there's the built-in percentage to cover upgrades and extra expenses.
That's what they tell you when you have a policy, but when the Middletown fire...
No, I, I know, I, I've been through it.
You, you do insurance?
No, I lost, I lost my house and went through a rebuild.
Oh, okay. So you understand a lot of the complications of what the insurance companies say, that, oh, you have this, but if you don't get this, you don't qualify for that. And we could talk all day long on how that works. And I actually became well-versed in all that because I helped people in the Middletown fire rebuild their house. People were calling me a year later, because I was helping people for free. A year later, people were still calling me on the phone from the Middletown fire crying because of the insurance companies and the building department. You, you have no idea how many people I helped get through the building department process because they just don't know where to turn if you're not in this business.
It is really, it's a difficult process, but I, I just have a problem that you kept building without the permit, and when so many other people did pay their permit and get their permit, and then along those lines, you know, I, you and I don't know each other, so I don't have any context, but you say you're a, you know, a longtime builder. But there, that's a public safety issue to not have those inspections along the way too, and make sure that you're adhering to all the current codes. So that, that's where my problem lies, is why, you know...
I, I understand.
You went forward anyway without the permit.
I, I understand.
And so many people had to do that work, and so what precedent does that set for us? Every other person that paid their permits, are they going to come to us now and want a refund?
You know, I realize I could be opening a can of worms here.
Yes.
And I apologize for that. That's not my intent. I built the Blue Wing Saloon, the Tallman Hotel, Lily Langtree's house. I worked on Siego, all as-built projects. So when I went to the building department and they wanted to do an as-built, and not because, because I am also an artist, as people know me, I, I wake up every morning and think of new ideas of how I want to do my house, and I can document it all on plans and bring it to the building department afterwards. I've done that many a time. So how come I let all these people, all these people who I did job for as as-built construction, now I can't do that? My neighbor built a house without a permit after the fire recently, and two weeks after, I think Bill Collins is the head of the building department now, told me there's no such thing as as-built on the books, he goes to my neighbor and said, well, we're just going to call you an as-built...
Okay.
...construction.
So you're the contractor building the house, so you don't have to hire a contractor like so many other people did. So I feel like it's not, it's a few thousand dollars to get that permit and move forward, but as a contractor building your own house, you have that extra savings because you're not hiring out all that work to be done?
I'm, I'm not building the house by myself.
Okay. But you don't have to hire a general contractor?
No.
And did you sub everything out?
I sub everything out, and I have carpenters that I pay...
And I get that costs rise exponentially while you're in the middle of building, but...
You, you also say a few thousand dollars. It's not a few thousand dollars. It was $18,000 that they asked me.
And how...
And they wanted $6,000 to review the plans. Now they've taken it back to, give us $100 and we'll review the plans. And unless that's changed again, I don't know.
But so many other people did. They went down that avenue, and then they also hired people to build their houses.
Yes.
So that's my...
And I, I went down what I was given permission to do. Now, you testified earlier of the turnover that this building department has and the planning department has. I was given a permission to do an as-built, and then that person left. And so what, does my permission go away now? Is it, is it permission that everybody got from everybody who left this county and went over to Minasino County for better paying jobs or whatever? It was null and void, the decisions that they make?
Just for my clarity, was the permission given by Mary Jane, is that true?
Yes.
Okay. Did you have anything else to add before?
No, that's it.
Supervisor Green, and then Supervisor Sabatier.
Yeah, again, process questions. Supposed to be a nuisance hearing, it's turning into a fee appeal hearing. So my first question is, going back to chapter five again, if we had been arguing about construction of roads, section 5.9B does have an appeals procedure in there that you could actually appeal the fees. I'm not seeing an appeal process for fees under 5.9, which may be something we want to take a look at. And if we do get to the point of talking about penalties, I may have some wiggle room in there as far as the reasonableness of the fees. That said, I agree with Supervisor Pyska, whatever your thoughts on the fairness of the fees or lack thereof, the evidence is pretty strong that you continue to build nonetheless. And can't speak to everyone, but there seems to be a pervasive attitude in this county that you build first and ask for forgiveness later. If you were a typical fire victim, I would say, okay, but as a general contractor, you have constructive knowledge of all the fees that are due. So if you had valid concerns over it, you could have done a couple of things. One, if there is an appeals procedure, you could try to pursue it. The normal process in that case would be to pay the full amount of fees and then appeal that and try to get a refund of that. But that didn't happen in this case either. So putting aside the reasonableness of the fees or not, did you or did you not continue to build without fully paying your fees?
Yes, I did. But I mean...
That's, that's all I think this hearing is about, and I stand to be corrected.
May I make a comment? Do you...
You, you will have plenty of opportunity to comment, but to the scope of this hearing, I'm, I'm objecting right here. This is not a fee appeal hearing, unless I hear information of the contrary.
I did, I don't know what section five is. Mr. Beltramo told me to do this, and this is what I did.
Is there anything other than the fees that you're objecting to?
No.
Okay. Supervisor Sabatier?
So I, I, I will start with, it's a little awkward to discuss abating and destroying a house when we are so desperate with building houses in this community. So personally, I, I, the rest of the board will decide how the board decides, but that, that is not the outcome that I want. The fees are the fees, and so it's either you get a permit and you pay the full fees that we're looking at, which I'm still somewhat confused as to what actually is the fees because I'm looking at the paperwork and it says $17,000, but now we're looking at $7,000, then we say $10,000. So I think we need to really figure out what the actual fees are minus the penalties and really separate that out because now, after reviewing it, because I saw $10,000 for construction, $6,000 for plant review, and that's already $16,000, so I, I'd like to figure out exactly what we're looking at because I, I'm now very confused as to what the numbers are. However, there needs a permit. I agree. You are in a very high fire threat area. We do need those inspections to occur. We do need those permits to be there. You have a very beautiful house that you're building. The last thing I want to see is that house going down. So we're going to get that permit done, and it's a matter of how we're going to get it done. And I would suggest, if you have proof from an insurance company, proof, not just verbal, it needs to be written that we provided a estimate of $4,000, then at that point, I say we have to stand by that $4,000. If there's no proof, then we need to go with what the permit fees are that are being discussed today, because there's no other evidence to show that that ever even existed at this moment in time, and the fact that you have not brought it to us, I'm, I'm thinking it probably doesn't exist. And unfortunately, a verbal conversation, whether it's a, yes, you have an ag-exempt barn, or yes, you can go ahead and build something, it needs to be written or on email or something in order to actually, in my opinion, be the evidence we need to make a decision. So it's a matter of either you can show proof of the $4,000 or we need you to pay the full amount, because there, to me, there's no other way about it. Destroying a house at this moment in time just seems... Destroying a house at this moment in time just seems so backwards of what we need to do, but we just need to figure out this gap right here of what we need to do.
I think you just heard testimony about the building fees being increased twice during this time.
I disagree about evidence coming from the insurance company because that's a point in time when they called in, and that's a different point in time to when he went and turned in his plans to get the permit. Anything can happen between that window. And that's why you go through the replacement process with insurance, because it's built in to have 25% more, whatever your plan, or whatever your policy says, to cover those added expenses.
Did you have your pen up again for something else? And then you were going to say something, sir. Go ahead and continue.
Well, it appears to me that there's plenty of evidence about the fee hike, so why do I need to prove that when you have the former head of the building department testifying against that? And did you go to the ag department and see if I had a permit on my ag building? Because my copy burned up, but I had a permit on it. And I have my signed-off permit that you've been, for two years you've been telling me that you canceled my permit. I have my signed copy of that permit. And you guys don't, but there's nothing I can do about that. I'm glad to show you my signed copy. And I've been trying. I've been very busy trying to rebuild my life, my house, my business, trying to communicate with, sorry, you, sir.
The permit you have, what is that for?
My foundation only permit that they keep saying they revoked or whatever. It was up on the screen a bit ago.
It's expired.
And so I'll just add while you're getting that, you know, with Mary Jane, there's, when I first got on the board, there was another situation in Upper Lake. I wouldn't say very similar, but there was, she had left and things got complicated, and she had given basically approval or something of that nature before, but it didn't, it ended up not coming to fruition. We had situations with that as well. So the legacy issues, I know that we have been talking about quite frequently, are, they have been, I've been noticing them as well. We all noticed them and have dealt with them. There was a statement made about fees being waived for other fires. Is that, I mean, is that accurate?
Yes, that is accurate for the Valley Fire.
Okay. And was there any other fires that this was done for?
No.
No?
About the Clayton Fire.
Was it Clayton Fire?
I think the Clayton Fire, the Valley Fire, in some instances, I think, most of the fires, when it was brought to the board, we had approved it. I think there was even a procedure for temporary housing structures and some other ordinances that were put in place. I don't have all those in my mind as we're moving forward. And then ultimately was also said was the school districts and the fire districts waived up to a certain footage. If you're rebuilding the same footprint, you pretty much should not pay anything. If you want a little bigger, then you had to pay per square foot over the size of the facility that you were rebuilding. So in many different cases, I think there were different things done by the board to help move the projects forward. So one other statement I want to say, too, is, you know, it's been said here a couple times that community development rates, yep, that was proposed to the board, this board votes on raising fees on a yearly basis, I think. I think it's done once a year. It's brought to us, and this board makes those decisions. And in those times of making those decisions, that the conversation comes up. These are not something that can be made for a profit. These are costs that are estimated that we can cover. I think we're going to hear that later on in another conversation we have on a different item. So we can only recover the costs. It is not a profit center. It is just recovering the costs and examining plans, moving forward with what needs to be done to build the project. So we do have those conversations on a yearly basis when it is brought to us for fees.
Supervisor Sabatier?
And I will say, we just reduced it to 2.6% from the 3% in the last fee schedule that we approved. And I get it, people went through hardship to rebuild. We can always learn and decrease that hardship. And if we have evidence, which none has been proposed, that there was communication or a written letter to an insurance, I am certain that there's a certain timeframe where that makes it still eligible, and I don't know where it fits in the chronology of things. You can't provide a letter and two days later change the fee schedule, which I doubt that's exactly what happened, but I'd like to better understand where does that fit and is there evidence of that? Because right now, there's none of that, and I want to see this moving forward. And I, it's a horrible suggestion, but again, obviously, you need a permit. You're going to have to get a permit. I don't want to see your house being taken down. And I would suggest we can put a lien on the property to pay for the permit if you're not willing to pay for the permit. That way, we can at least get paid for doing the work to make sure that everything is properly permitted, properly done to code. And at that point, we will collect that money. But we have to, we have to do something to continue moving forward and not take a step back.
You know, I've had inspectors in my house all the way through the property, all the way through my construction. And I have their business cards at home of Nick and I forget the other guy's name, but I have their cards when they've come to my house and looked at my house. Not as an official, I didn't call them to come to my house to come in inspection, but they came to my house anyway and looked at my house and watched my construction the whole way. And you, Nick's the only guy's name that I can remember, but there's a younger guy that came there also. And I'm not here because I don't want to get a permit. I want to get a permit. I don't have the money to pay any more eighteen thousand dollars.
All right.
I want to pay a reasonable fee. If I got to go borrow the money to pay a reasonable fee, I want the fee to be reasonable. And there's laws on the books that you cannot make a profit, like Moke says.
So I have a question, another question about what needs to happen in order to, when there is, you know, a really giant fire like we've had, is there, is it the proclamation of an emergency that dictates waiving the fees? Is there something that happens here first? If someone can answer that question, Miss Grant.
Normally, when there's a proclamation of a disaster, that the issue of whether your board wishes to defer fees or waive them for a period of time just comes to you, and that normally is just deferring enforcement of an ordinance and a waiver of fees, and that comes to you in the form of a resolution.
And was that done for the Mendocino Complex fire? I don't-
I don't know. Maybe the department knows since they brought this.
I seem to remember no fees on temporary power or temporary dwelling permits. I don't remember waiving the fees for rebuilds. The conversations at that time, I thought, centered about how insurance was paying for permit fees. And so we were going to charge for building permit fees. But I could be mistaken, but I do remember that the temp dwelling and temp permit, I think we waived those.
I can definitely recall those conversations because we learned from the Valley Fire as we were moving through the process. But everything had a timeframe on when you could do it. Obviously, I think one specifically is the road impact fees, and I think we brought those back in less than a year because we had not only the fire, but we also had road issues. May have just been a year for that. I think there were specific timeframes when you had to have your permit in place, when you could set it in. I think it was a two-year timeframe. We had issues with that, obviously, where people pushed it way longer than we needed to. But we understand the hard part of rebuilding after a fire. So I don't have all the specific answers. I know it was done in different ways. So, and, you know, just like everyone else, yes, it wasn't my specific home, but my daughter's home burned down in the fire. We had to rebuild it. We had to go through that process. We understand, we didn't build it our own. We went up the modular route, which was a little bit easier in the process. But we did have to go through and pay those fees and do the site plans and go to the schools and get all those things rechecked. And, you know, so it was a challenge. Ultimately, you didn't want to pay anything, but there were fees that needed to be paid to even rebuild the home you lost. And we didn't have insurance. So it was a real challenge. But, and I know our community is still recovering this day. So it is, it was a horrible event, we're moving through it. Don't have those specific dates for you on this. Today really is on the appeal. And for me, I guess my follow-up question, because I've heard from the appellant here, he wants to get the permits, who want to be able to move forward. I heard from Supervisor Sabatier. My question is going to be, and this is where I'm going with it, I'm always trying to be solution-oriented here, the fines, the penalties. I think as a board, we have a right to do something with the penalties. I don't so much say that we should with the fees, but the penalties, I think, should be a conversation we have before a decision is made today. That's my thoughts on us working both with you as an appellant, and it may not get everybody where they want to be, but I have that discussion that I'd like to bring up.
Supervisor Green, you have your pen up.
Yeah, thank you. I do think penalty would be part of the discussion when we make a motion based, my personal opinion is based on the continued unwillingness to date to pay up the fee. I would leave the penalty on the motion just to ensure that if fees are paid, then we can talk about taking that off. But it'd be a quid pro quo. Again, this has devolved into a fee appeal hearing. I don't know that we have that really authority to weigh that, given the hearing that is presented to us. Question, of the built stuff that's on there, how much money have you spent on materials and any subcontractors you brought in to help you?
The whole project?
Yes.
Probably a million dollars.
And you're saying that you're sticking to your guns over an eighteen thousand dollar building fee?
You know, eighteen thousand dollars that I don't have, and you make an assessment that I'm not wanting to do this. I like his idea. You want to put a lien on my property for the permit fees? I'd go along with that and get that permit. But I also will come back, and I want to know why you're charging so much money for myself and everybody else involved. Why are your fees so high? And why did you, I built one of the first houses in Middletown for our former sheriff here with no, where they waived the fees.
Apples and oranges. Apples and oranges. My question to you, sir.
I misunderstood your question then. What's your question again?
Your whole basis of this appeal has to do with your understanding of the fairness of the fee or lack thereof. Again, I don't know that there's a procedure in this code to even consider this as a fee appeal, but I find that particular aspect, if that's all you're appealing, I'm sorry, you haven't presented anything that would convince me that we shouldn't proceed with the recommended action, including the penalty. And if you were to come within the next thirty days and pay up your permit fee, I'd be willing to waive that penalty. Other than that, I don't know what we're talking about.
So I hear someone online, Mary Jane, did you have something to add, or is that, or are you just not muted?
I guess I wasn't muted. Sorry.
Okay. Supervisor Pyska, you-
It's okay, we can go.
Okay. All right, and so I'll just clarify on my end. I know that there's, did you have anything else to add before I call on-
I've heard a dozen numbers. What is my fee?
Well, and that's what we'll get to shortly. I'll let Joan come up as she has her hands up if you don't have anything else to add before we discuss that further. So we're not moving forward until after she comes up. And you did swear in, Joan?
No, I did not. I was not in the room.
Okay. Joanna, can you swear in, please?
Maria, do you have the correct fees of penalties?
Do you solemnly swear that the testimony you're about to give will be the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
Thanks.
So before the fees, I was just about to total them up. This is the penalty. That's it included. This is included in that, so the fee would have been-
Joan Moss, I was going to read his letter, but he-
Joan, we have it. We have a letter. No, Joan, we're not going to, Joan, we're not going to hear you read the letter. We have it, we've read it. So if you have something to comment on, that's what we'll move forward with.
It's not fair to be quoted four thousand for a price.
Joan, then that's a good statement to make.
And a year later to tell you it's been raised 30%. Mary Jane Fagaldi herself was a community director, and she said that the prices were raised 30%. I remember when Bob Locious was the water resource person, and Lake County was scolded because they had two expensive fees. And Lake County had to pay back the fees that they had charged that were not fair. I don't think it's fair to make a fire victim who helped everybody else pay a 30% raise that he was quoted to start with. In one year, the fees increased 30%. Why? How? He was a fire victim. How many people did not rebuild on Cobb because they couldn't afford it? I'm saying that Tom Carter is a community helper. He's a hero. He built houses for nothing. And yet, you're charging him a 30% increase from what he was quoted to start with. Thank you.
Thank you, Joan. Thank you. And so if there's anyone else online-
Can I just make one quick comment?
I'd like to close the public part of it before that. So if there's not anyone else online, I'd like to close that portion of it, bring it back to the board. And sir, you could, if there's something that we have to ask you, Mr. Carter, we'll ask you still, but if there's not anything else to add, I'm going to bring it back to the board, close it for public on that aspect. So Supervisor Sabatier and Supervisor Pyska.
I just want to make a quick comment. It shouldn't matter who is in front of us. It's about what's right and what's fair. We shouldn't be looking at people's value in the community because if we don't know you, that means we're not going to provide the same outcomes. We need to do what's right and what's fair. It shouldn't matter who people are. Sorry, needed to say.
No, it's good.
Yes, and I just asked Director Turner to get us the accurate number so that we can have a clear understanding on what the fees and penalties are.
So with the penalty, the penalty is $10,211.57. The total, including that penalty, is $21,816.80. The total without the penalty is $11,605.23.
So $11,000 was the original permit fee?
$11,000 would have been the original permit fee. That would be approximately $7,000 and change for the primary dwelling and the garage, $1981 for the ADU, and $2719 for the barn.
I'd like to request a five-minute recess, please, for clarification of that. I just, there's other dialogue happening simultaneously, and I think there's, I just want to make sure that we're providing exactly what we-
I would like to make sure I'm giving you accurate data as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
That would help then for staff.
Five-minute break?
Yes, five-minute break, and then we'll come back. Thank you.
Who?
Looks like we've went beyond our five minutes, so we'll go ahead and come back to order here.
I think there's a kind call.
Very kind, yeah. It's like a airport, an airport call.
Nice.
Your flight. All right, so as we're coming back to, coming back to order here, looks like we were talking about some specific numbers and getting them right on the same page. Before we get further in, I'll just, because I know there's not been a lot said by me about what I feel about this, as it's in the district, one of my, a lot of my questions were based around the other fires, if there was fees in fact waived, things like that. I know that there was time constraints on that type of aspect of it. And the fact that there was, there was a lot of building conducted regardless of the permits. You know, for me, had the building not happened myself, I would be willing to waive fees just because of the dynamic and the testimony by Mary Jane, because I've witnessed a couple of her situations where Mary Jane has had to come and help me with that type of dialogue. However, there was, there was building conducted. I do understand the fees were not agreed on by the appellant. I do like the idea brought forward. I, you know, me, myself, would like to go as low as possible fees, but I know there has to be a consensus of the board. So whatever our consensus is to move forward with, I'm good with. But at the same time, with Mary Jane's testimony as well, really helps for my, for my decision-making. And so from that, I'll just let you go ahead and have the floor there, Ms. Turner.
This is for the correct amount?
Yes, yes, the fees. Sorry, yeah.
The total amount with the penalty is $27,327.14. Without the penalty, it is $17,100. The total amount with the penalty is $27,327.14. Without the penalty, it is $17,115.57. And I want to thank our building technician for jumping up and correcting me.
Okay, so what happened to the $7,1927, or is that based on like 2019 or something like that, or? The, it was basically like the $11,000 and change that was?
The $17,115 was the amount without the penalty.
Okay.
I think that's a typographical error when it says it includes the penalty.
All right. Supervisor Sabatier?
Two things. One, I'm gonna throw a little bit of a wrench, and I'm sorry I didn't think about this during the break, but I think that's just the house. We are not talking right now about the barn or the ADU, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I mean, my suggestion is this. I know that we have Mr. Carter, who wants to pay a lesser amount. We have a building that has been built without the proper permits, so we have issues where we're kind of going opposite directions. What I'd like to offer is what I offered before. We go with the fees that are current for today, which is the $17,000 number that you offered, and that Mr. Carter has a certain amount of days to pay those, and if he doesn't pay those, then it gets placed as a lien on his property. That lien is like a direct tax on his property taxes. I did check in with our tax collector-elect that it is a direct tax and that it has to be paid, and if it's not paid within a certain number of years, we've been doing tax defaults, and I'm sure Mr. Carter does not want to see his property placed on a tax default, therefore will pay those within a certain amount of time. That allows us to make sure that we are going to get paid so that we can provide the service to ensure that the house meets code and is safe and can be occupied. That way, we increase the fees based on the perspective from Mr. Carter, because he wants it to be less, so it's $17,000, and we reduce the amount by getting rid of the penalties, and I think that's a fine medium where we can make sure that we get paid for the work we do, provide a safe home, and be able to move forward, because again, destruction of this house, in my opinion, is the worst thing that this board could possibly do today.
Oh, go ahead, Maria, and then I.
Supervisor Sabatier was making reference to the exact fees I wanted to also offer with the inclusion of the ADU and the barn. That total without the penalty would be $21,816.80.
And so did you have anything to add?
I just want, my name is Dana Hooters. I just wanted to add that the $17,000 also includes a 788 square foot garage.
Supervisor Piscia?
I am not in favor of reducing the penalties to zero. I'm okay with making some kind of reduction, but there's a lot of staff time that's gone into this. It's been several years. I feel like he could have paid these fees, and he thumbed his nose at our policies and the law, and I, I think there needs to be some consequence for that.
Supervisor Green?
Yeah, question for staff. When we get around to making a motion on the recommended action on page four of the staff report, I see the word penalties twice, and I think I like the second penalties better. So for example, if we were to, if I were to make a motion to uphold the code enforcement notice of violation and notice of nuisance in order to abate and direct the property owner to pay the permit fees of whatever you just said, 17,115.57, leave out that and any penalties, comma, or voluntarily abate all unpermitted structures by first obtaining a demo permit, if not done so in a period of time determined by the Board of Supervisors, I'm gonna propose that period of time to be 30 days, and then direct staff to move forward with the imposition of administrative penalties that looks like close to 10K, whatever that amount would be, and then if necessary, pursue abatement of all unpermitted structures. So I'd like to do is basically take that recommended action, direct the property owner to pay the permit fees, whatever that final accounting number was, within 30 days. After that, we will move forward with the second part of that recommended action, start abatement procedures against the unpermitted structures, and impose the penalties. And if that made sense, that would be good, because I think it did, but I wanted to just clarify the wording of the recommended action.
I think the total fees are $21,000, aren't they?
Yeah, which includes the barn and the ADU.
Right.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, could you, could you give me that total again with the ADU and the barn?
It's the $21,000 that Director Turner provided for us. I don't have the exact figure.
It's not $21,000?
Administrative penalties would be assessed at $130 per day since the posting of the notice of nuisance in order to abate, which was April 20th.
Do we have a calculation on that?
About to get you one. Days has September, April, June, and November.
I don't even know if we need that to be clarified in the motion.
So it would be?
210 times.
Any applicable administrative penalties, and these are administrative penalties, correct?
Yes.
All right, let me take another run at this, unless there's any further discussion.
How is this in reference? One quick question to the, what you were talking about with the, on the lien. Is that, was that included, or is that not included?
I'm sorry?
The lien that Supervisor Sabatier was talking about after the 30 days.
I think that, well, I think the lien is available at all times. I don't think we need to call it out in the motion necessarily. I think that's always an available option. If you want to spell it out, we can do it.
I do want to argue against what you're about to offer, which is, I don't want to order to abate.
Okay. Let me make a motion.
I'm gonna say no on that. I would rather we automatically lien and make sure we keep moving forward, because again, solutions, not stepping backwards, is what I'm looking for.
Well, kind of reinventing the abatement wheel to accommodate this particular situation. I'm gonna make the motion and see where it goes. How about that? I'm gonna move that the Board of Supervisors uphold the code enforcement notice of violation and notice of nuisance in order to abate, direct property owner to pay the permit fees totaling $21,816.80, or voluntarily abate all unpermitted structures by first obtaining a demo permit, if not done so within 30 days, direct staff to move forward with the imposition of administrative penalties as they may apply from the date of the violations, and if necessary, pursue abatement of all unpermitted structures. If you wanted to amend that to allow for the, that's the motion, if you wanted to amend that to allow for the imposition of payment of penalties by lien or fees by lien, absolutely go for it.
It's your motion, not mine.
So are you adding the lien in what you just stated into it, or?
Would that be satisfactory if I did that?
I would be satisfied.
Okay, then I would amend the, amend the motion to clarify that, well, I'm not gonna take out the demo, so yeah, with clarification that any and all such fees and penalties, if not paid by the applicant, may be placed by lien on the property for collection at a later time.
But you also have the abatement.
Yeah, keeping the abatement.
How can it be both?
Because, if the work, if the work is out of compliance, you abate the work that's out of compliance. The administrative penalty is just for being, penalizing bad behavior, and the bad behavior exists here. So the administrative penalty, and, you know, when you're doing an abatement, you're correcting the violation and bringing the property back in its conformance. When you're imposing administrative penalties, you're saying regardless of the cure, you done something bad.
All right, so Ms. Green?
I thought we were gonna do the assessment.
It may just be the order in which it's, it's being read, but if I understand, what the motion essentially is, is to uphold the code enforcement notice of violation, notice of nuisance in order to abate, and direct the property owner to pay the permit fees and/or agree to a lien against the property in the amount of the permit fees, or voluntarily abate all unpermitted structures by first obtaining a demolition permit, and if such action is not done within the period of time determined by the board, staff is directed to move forward with the imposition of administrative penalties as computed from the date of the violation, and if necessary, pursue abatement of all unpermitted structures. Does that do it?
The amount, is that the $17,000 or the $21,000?
$21,816.80.
All right, then that's clear to me, if it's clear to everyone else. Is that your motion?
Yeah, so moved, as restated by county council.
Looks like Ms. Director Turner might have a.
Still trying to wrap my head around the motion, sorry. Just for staff clarification, please, if I understand correctly, if the owner, if the owner asks to have this building permit fees assessed as a lien against his parcel, that would solve the problem? Is that correct? Because in one motion, it sounded like it was going there, but the other one, it doesn't quite, and that's not usually how we accept payment for building fees, so I just wanted to be really clear.
All right. Supervisor.
Sorry.
And I understand that this is not a normal situation, but, and I'm not going to push back at all, I believe Supervisor Green also said imposition of penalties in his motion, and to me, if you don't want penalties, you pay it upfront, or else you're gonna have to pay more for the permit because the penalties will apply. And at this point in time, just so we don't create a situation where every building permit becomes a lien on a property, I am going to say yes to what was proposed by Supervisor Green, and hopefully that gives you a bit of clarification as to what is being proposed. And I second.
Supervisor Simon?
And just one more clarification for myself. The ultimate goal here, and I think is as confusing it is right now, we are giving the appellant an opportunity through this motion to pay the permit fees, and then the penalties are no longer applicable. Is that what's happening, or no? If they pay them, and if they don't, then it would be added onto the lien. So I just want that clarified.
Ms. Grant?
I think that what Supervisor Green's motion was, before the introduction of the lien against the property concept, was, again, to recommend the Board of Supervisors uphold the code enforcement notice of violation, notice of nuisance in order to abate, and direct the property owner to pay the permit fees, or voluntarily abate all permitted structures by first obtaining a demolition permit, if not done within the period of time determined by the board, direct staff to move forward with the imposition of administrative penalties, and if necessary, pursue abatement. So I think that's a restatement of what Supervisor Green had originally proposed.
Okay, yes. One more clarification, thank you.
No, always good for clarification.
All right, so we're all clear? Is there any other comment before I call for the vote?
I just want to make sure staff is clear. Are we okay, Director Turner? We're all, we're all clear? Okay.
Yes, okay. So I have a motion, and then Supervisor.
One more clarification, instead of to Director Turner, Anita, we're always having this conversation about setting precedents. In this motion, is there any precedent setting? Sorry about, you know, but I gotta ask that question to make sure.
Well, no, it's always a very good question, and it's your responsibility as a board to ensure that you consider that. I think here that you're holding fast with regard to the permitting fees, the only part that you're willing to reconsider are the penalties, and your board has done that on other occasions, as you know.
Okay, thank you.
With that, I'll call for the vote. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you for that presentation, and thank you for, for coming in and dealing with this. And so move on to the next item on the agenda, which is, do we, do we think it's going to, do we think it's gonna take longer than?
What else is on here?
It's the, well, it's the timed item of 10:15.
I think Moke would know best if it's gonna take longer or not.
No one has reached out to me directly for today's conversation, but I know in the future, we definitely have, will have pretty good participation.
Is there anyone, well?
I'd say let's.
All right. Let's, 6.5, Sitting as Lake County Sanitation District Board of Directors, consideration of proposed resolution to receive, approve, and adopt the financial planning revenue requirements and rate setting analysis for Lake County Sanitation District, Middletown Sewer, Scott Harder, Director of Special Districts.
Thank you, Chair, members of the board. Is that on?
Yes.
Check, check.
It will be.
Okay. There we go. Scoot that back now so I'm not so hot. Thank you. What you have before you for your consideration today is a resolution to receive, approve, and adopt the financial study rate analysis and cost of services study that we had done in conjunction with the proposed rate increase for our Middletown Sewer District. So as part of the Proposition 218 process, we brought in an outside consultant to evaluate the cost of services, the current rate structure, the proposed rate structure, and then put together an analysis that was in compliance with Proposition 26 and Proposition 218, which are the two propositions which govern rate setting. Pardon me. Little bit of brief history on the district. Late 1980s, there were some assessment bonds considered for Middletown area. In the early 1990s, they formed Middletown Sewer Project Assessment District 2-2. Property was acquired, bonds were issued, infrastructure was installed, and in 1995, the rates were established. Those rates have not been modified since then, there is no escalator CPI adjustment on those rates. So the rates that are currently being paid in our Middletown Sewer District are based on 1995 costs. I want to give a little background, if you'll bear with me. So the general methodology that was, was kind of the approach, was our consultant looked at growth projection within the district. So how many, how many customers are we gonna add per year? And they did that basing it on historical growth, which is about 2.5% per year. They then looked at our operating costs. So when they did their financial analysis, they looked at our budget and our actual operation and maintenance costs. They did this study for a five-year period, so they took our actual numbers and projected what our operating costs would be for that five-year period. They did, then did what they call a cost of service analysis. So that cost of service analysis looks at the different types of account classifications. You've got residential, you've got restaurants, you have commercial, you have the school down there, you have laundromats, you have gas stations, service stations, what have you. Each of those different types of accounts impacts the collection and treatment process differently. They each have a different flow volume and a different intensity of waste stream that comes in from that. So part of the underlying concepts underneath Proposition 218 and Prop. 26 are that the amount that is charged is no more than is necessary to cover the reasonable costs. Moke mentioned it earlier. We're not a profit center. We are not here to generate profit off the backs of our ratepayers. We are here only to cover the reasonable costs of operation and maintenance and providing that service to our ratepayers. There also has to be a proportionality requirement. So that's why all the analysis happened on, you know, how much flow comes in from a different type of account, and what's the strength of that flow? Because for the impact that a given customer has, they, they should be paying a proportional share of those costs of services or those rates. And then that, finally, that rate analysis is what's in place to do that. So the contractor took our operating costs over that five-year window, they took the flows, the projected flows, and the impact of each customer account type, and then they proportionally rated those rates to each customer type or account type. Because of that, you're gonna see differences in the percentage amount of rate increases for a different customer class. Residential is gonna go up a certain amount, school or commercial may go up a differing percentage amount, and that was because the historical rates established in 1995 may not have been proportional or a fair share across the board. This analysis seeks to rectify that and provide a rate structure which meets the requirement of the law. And that's really the question we're here to decide today. As Moke indicated, we've got a public hearing on December 6th, there's gonna be plenty of talk and plenty of discussion about setting rates at a given level, but what we're gonna do? But what we're considering today is whether or not the study that was performed is in compliance with Proposition 26 and Prop 218, and provides that foundation for moving forward to the next step in the process.
Thank you for that. And just briefly, I was going to let the folks from Behavioral Health know that after this topic, we're going to go straight to lunch, so I know that you're probably here for that. After lunch, we'll go ahead and, we'll go straight to your items. Okay, and so go ahead and continue. I didn't know that you just finished, so does anybody have any questions for Supervisor Sabatier?
I'll just make some statements. Had a good discussion, thank you very much, Director Harder, for being available. There was just a couple of things that I wanted to bring in. Number one, inflation, from what I understand, inflation is not hitting the supplies and equipment that are necessary for the sewer system at this moment in time, but that was something I was concerned that maybe weren't part of the report. And then the report, I also was worried, the fact that it states stagnant at 70 commercial businesses, and so my question is to Supervisor Simon, is there, I know there's been some new businesses, but I also don't know if there's been a loss of businesses in the area over the last two or three years, or last two years. But just kind of curious what the projection should be, rather than a stagnant 70 commercial outlets. And then the residential seem to grow fairly slowly, but I know that there's the potential still for that subdivision on Santa Maria, I believe is the name of that street?
Barn Street. There's a few opportunities in the future. There's the Barn Street Apartments that burned, or in the Valley Fire, there are a couple other residential areas, but I think all can all be accounted for. As far as the standard number of 70 businesses, obviously, they come and go, and when you get down to South County, some of the new businesses were built in Hidden Valley, so don't pertain to here. And so, you know, I think the 70 number's okay, because it changes all the time whether businesses are coming or going, so.
Okay.
Because now, once the rates are set, a new business comes in, they get, right, they'll get the new rates that are set.
Well, regardless, existing businesses will get the rates if the rate study is adopted. In February of 2023 is when we're proposing to adopt the rates. Yeah, any existing customers. But what we see a lot on the commercial side is that businesses will go out and businesses will come in. So it's occupying the same address, and so we're not seeing a significant increase in connections per se that are commercial in nature. The other point, speaking towards the escalation costs and inflation, we're not seeing additional due to COVID or due to, you know, higher inflation recently, but they did take into account, and if you look on page five or page eight of the PDF of the study, they built in escalation factors for utility, chemical costs, treatment costs, insurance costs, fuels, automobiles, employee expenses, equipment, construction, for an overall 2.47 anticipated inflation.
Yeah, and I saw that number, and that, just in comparison to what everyone else is dealing with. I just wanted to bring up those points, and also the, I know schools in Lake County are some of the only counties in the entire state of California that are seeing or anticipating increases, when most other counties in the state of California are seeing decreases or stagnation. Those are all just things I wanted to bring up, and it wasn't necessarily for looking at the rates, but, well, it's to look at the rates to ensure that we are collecting the operation and maintenance necessary for future growth and things of the kind. Because we don't want to, I would prefer that in the future, and I'm sure Middletown would prefer, that we see slight increases, rather than have to come back for another larger increase, because we didn't project appropriately based on the new data that we have. So I just wanted to bring those points up. I definitely had a good conversation with Director Harder, and I'm comfortable with moving forward, but wanted to at least make those statements.
Yeah, I definitely want to make that as we go forward, at least while I spend my time on the board, that we are analyzing these things as we move forward. Because something not being raised since 1995, the big increase is just to cover the costs. There is no good time to raise fees, that's the reality. We all have to pay the fees, the sewer fees. I got my sewer bill also, as we're talking about, so, you know, these are hard conversations. But setting it up going forward, something that needs to be reviewed every five to seven years. I don't know what the timeframe is going to be, we're going to 2026, but at least being reviewed by each one of our districts that we operate, that we're doing this, because it is, it's a big chunk to bite off right off the bat. And there's going to be some discussion about that. So that's one question I kind of had today on the conversation. It sets up with the 100% increase being the first year, and if we adopt this as an ordinance, and we're saying all of this stuff that was done by this is good, but we are going to talk, I think that's going to be a topic of conversation on the 6th, that first year increase. So it's been brought up, myself and you were at the math meeting. As we're doing that, maybe we can spread out the pain a little bit, is the thought on that. But other than that, and this is something, I will tell you, this is something, when I first came on the board, Jan Koppinger said, you know, this, it needs to happen. Then we had disaster after disaster after disaster after disaster, and that conversation just couldn't happen. You couldn't be in the midst of recovering from Valley Fire, Clayton Fire, you know, the Ranching River Fire, everything that's going on every year, and so we got to this point. So Jan obviously retired, Scott has stepped up, and now here we are with this conversation. And I know a lot of preemptive work was done to move forward, to put us in the best position, which got, we'll probably talk a little more about the grant for the opportunity that was given from the state, some other things, but really trying to get the best bang for your buck as we're moving forward with these rate increases, to keep them down as much as possible, so.
Correct. And to your point, the current legislation requires that we review the rates every five years. So there will be, in, you know, in five years' time, there will be another look at it, and then the establishment, so, you know, this is a five-year window, and then it'll be another five-year window after that. So as things ebb and flow, we'll be keeping current with it.
Excellent. Supervisor Green?
Yeah, just for the study itself, City of Lakeport very recently went through the same thing, hadn't looked at the rates. We did both wastewater and domestic water supplies, so we got a double whammy. So, yeah, the first year increases are going to stand out as they did in ours, if I can offer any words of encouragement. We did not get a huge amount of pushback on it. I think people understand these services cost money to provide, they're important, and we cannot let districts linger for decades at a time being underfunded. If there is some pushback in this, I am heartened by the fact that it looks like any immediate capital needs are covered by a grant, whereas we had some capital projects we couldn't cover. So although we did discuss kind of spreading the pain across multiple years, we ended up sticking to our guns on the first-year rates in the city, because we needed to get that capital stuff funded properly. So appreciate the detail in the study, it hits all the marks that I think it needs to, and I certainly wish the district well, as they consider actually adopting these rate increases. But the study looks very solid from everything I've looked at. Thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Just one comment to Supervisor Simon. From the LAFCO perspective, it'd be nice if that five-year can fit with our MSR five-year, that way, both are being reviewed simultaneously, so that they can complement one another to better understand what might need to be done, what's working, what needs to be looked at. Secondly, just to let everyone know in Middletown, if it goes as it's presented, I'm still paying more in the city of Clear Lake for the sewers. The increase is not going above and beyond, it's going to exactly what's needed, so that, again, operations can happen, so.
Yeah, we had a chart that I presented at the math meeting, and will probably bring up at the public hearing, but not necessarily appropriate for here, but I had surveyed about a half dozen in-county and also about a half dozen out-of-county other sewer districts. And if the proposed rates do go through, the only district in the county that is lower, and actually, the only district that I could find was lower, is our Kelseyville Water Works District, number three. Their current monthly rate, I think, is about $29 a month, and these would be proposed to be about 32, I believe. And they're next on our list for consideration of a rate increase, because they haven't been done in way too long either.
All right. I'm seeing any other comments, I'll open up to the public. If there's anyone from the public who'd like to speak on this item? I'm not seeing anyone come to the microphone, or no hands up in Zoom room, so we'll bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, we're offering the resolution?
Resolution has been offered.
Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Thanks.
Motion for a resolution has been passed.
Thank you.
Thank you, Scott. And so with that, we are at a lunch break, and so we'll go ahead and come back at 1:40, which is an hour from now, so we'll go ahead and do that. We'll see you after lunch. Thank you. All right. All right, welcome back from the lunch break. We'll go ahead and move on to our next item on the agenda, which is our 7.4, right? Is that, yes. Okay, 7.4, consideration of Resolution 2022-118, adopting final budget for fiscal year 2223 to increase revenues and appropriations in Budget Unit 4015, Behavioral Health Services Department. And I see the Behavioral Health Services Department staff and director, Todd coming up.
I thought your vacancies were better than this.
Yeah, no, I won't. Yeah, I just, I told them I would do theirs, yeah.
You can come up.
There wasn't enough chairs.
Oh.
So I told her she could have this one, but she's like, no.
I'll stand right here, I'll be at park.
Well, I know this has been a long day, I've been following this board meeting.
Oh.
Hopefully I don't take anything down with me.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I know this has been a long day, and I will do our best to keep it brief, even though I brought in the troops to make sure that if there are any questions I can't answer, that hopefully they will help us out, help me out. But, so what is before you is a resolution to increase our substance use disorder services budget in the amount of $10 million. I know that sounds like a lot of money. It is a lot of money, but it's all good. It's all good, because what we found in working with our New Life Tribal Clinic over in Ukiah over the last few months, and you've heard me talk about this before, that we've seen an increase in utilization of services, which is a good thing, good problem to have. So we talked about this here before, as your board has already approved the amendment to our existing drug-medical agreement of the last month. So this $10 million will cover the deficit fund balance that we've talked about before, and allow us to continue to provide mandated substance use disorder treatment services at the New Life Clinic in Ukiah. And again, we're excited about this opportunity to work with the clinic over in Ukiah, because we are able to serve more people than we ever have, and I have staff here that might want to fill in anything that I've missed, but I'm trying to keep it brief, because I know you've had a long day so far. And this is a great opportunity, the funds are there, and we're doing more than we ever have before. So did anyone else want to? They're all shaking their heads.
How do you respond to questions?
All right.
Questions?
Are there any questions from the board?
It just, it looks like, looks like I'm looking at a two for, you're up here for seven, four, and seven, five, two X.
Yeah, this one, if the board approves this resolution, then we can move on to the next item. So, yeah, they're both very, they're both tied together.
Other than the big digits, this is reimbursement funding, right? So.
Correct.
All right, thank you.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Yeah, just a quick question. The 1.8975 million says, from that amount over fiscal years 20, did it start off at 2020, 21 at that amount, and then it slowly increased to what is now 2223 to 10 million? Just to kind of understand where that number came from. I believe we're into this fiscal year. But let me rephrase, because it says, this resolution will increase, and it's weird that it mentions 2021, because we're not increasing 2021, we're increasing 2223. But it says, will increase the substance use disorder budget for behavioral health from 1.8975 million over fiscal years 2021, 2122, and 2223. I know it's your board memo, but I just kind of wanted to clarify, because I see the only approval is 10 million for 2223.
Do you want to? I believe that's because the memo was written before we made, we worked with Kathy and Stevens, who adjust the resolution, so that's probably why those are on there, we changed the resolution.
And it's only 2223, from what I'm understanding? Okay, just wanted to clarify, just in case there was something I was missing.
All right. I'll open up to the public, see if there's anybody online, because, yeah, there's nobody in the chamber, so we'll go and see, and I will give a couple seconds. No hands, so we'll go ahead and bring it back to the board for further action.
I'll just make a quick comment. We did already approve the 28 million or 26 million with the state, as you mentioned earlier. Yes, last month. I'm getting lost in the big number. It's all right, it's complicated. And since this is within the boundaries of what we've already stated with the state, for this one, I'm going to say yes. For the next agreement, I'll have further comments. And if there's no other conversation or questions or comments, I move to approve Resolution 2022-118, adopting final budget for fiscal year 2223 to increase revenues and appropriations in Budget Unit 4015, Behavioral Health Services Department, to $10 million.
Second?
It's a resolution.
There's a resolution.
Resolution has been offered.
I reneg all my remarks, and say I offer the resolution.
Supervisor, or, yeah, Supervisor Simon?
Yes.
Supervisor Sabatier?
Aye.
Supervisor Green?
Aye.
Supervisor Pisca?
Yes.
And Supervisor Crandall.
Aye.
Thanks.
All right, item 7.5, thank you for that, and resolution has passed. 7.5, consideration of A, request to waive competitive bidding according to Section 38.22, and B, agreement between County of Lake and New Life Health Authority, DBA New Life LLC for a substance abuse disorder outpatient drug-free services intensive outpatient treatment services and narcotic treatment program services for fiscal year 2223 in the amounts of $10 million. And we'll give the floor to Director Metcalf.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board. So thank you for approving the resolution, because we needed that approval in order to enter into this agreement with New Life Clinic over in Ukiah. Again, as I said, we are mandated by the state to provide these services, and we did go out to bid earlier this year, but since New Life over in Ukiah is the closest provider to Lake County, that's the reason we're asking to waive the formal bidding process, to enter in an agreement with New Life. And I think that we may have someone from New Life in this meeting that might want to say more to this, but as I said before, we are seeing a dramatic increase in folks utilizing these services, which we have never seen before, which is a really good thing. And so we are very excited about this, and we are new at this. That's why this has been pretty clumsy, bringing this to the Board of Supervisors, because we are the, well, we're the only county right now doing this, utilizing these funds, these tribal funds, to help folks with substance use disorders, and we are very excited to bring this to you, and we're being very brave about it, because we are still trying to figure it out. But New Life Clinic is helping us through this, and I don't know if, is she there? Oh, she's there. She might want to say something to this. I asked her to join us, if she can, to speak a little bit more about the services that she oversees, that we are entering into this, hoping to enter into this agreement with. Oh, there she is.
All right. Jennifer, would you like to speak? Go ahead.
Sure, thank you so much. It's a great honor to be in front of you today, and by way of introduction, I'm working not only with New Life Clinic as a tribal 638 clinic, but in my former capacity, before I was a consultant, I was the director for the State California Department of Healthcare Services. And so I oversaw all 56 county behavioral health plans, as well as all of the rest of the medical program. So I just wanted to very quickly help ground the board's understanding of a tribal 638 clinic. They are distinctly recognized by both federal and state law. They are distinctly recognized by both federal and state law. They have a very specific designation for purposes of Medicaid. They are owned and operated by tribes through a compact with Indian Health Services. And the onus of both state and managed care plans, of which you are one as a behavioral health plan yourself. The onus is on you to contract with tribal entities as opposed to the other way around where healthcare, more generally, usually healthcare entities want and attempt to contract with plans. But tribes, as distinct sovereign nations with, again, very specific federal and state protections and recognition under law, the onus is on the state and on the counties to contract. New Life as a 638 clinic has its rates for reimbursement set by the federal government. So they are not subject to negotiation. They are not based on the costs of a specific clinic, but they are established every year in the federal register. Those funds that the clinic and the tribe generate from their services have to be reapplied to the tribe's health and human service programs, right? They're not, they're not like other sources of revenue that tribes could generate through other types of business operations. So all of that being said, the New Life Clinic in Ukiah, since it has opened, has served residents of not only Lake County, but also Mendocino County through Partnership Health Plan. And when Lake County started to see a fairly dramatic increase in the number of residents that were attending the clinic, the tribe approached the county and your staff at the Behavioral Health Department and offered to fund the non-federal share of those Medicaid services. So today, the county is, is using your realignment funds to fund those Medicaid services, right? Medicaid is a matching program. And the tribe has offered to fund that on behalf of the county and in which the county would then be drawing down the federal funds from the state for those services and returning them back to the tribe. So in a very simple way, that is the contract that is in front of you is it's in recognition of the revenues that are generated through this tribal clinic based on the federal encounter rate, but also recognizing that the tribe will be providing the non-federal share of funds for the county.
Thank you, Jennifer.
All right. Any questions? Supervisor Green?
I appreciate the creative use of the word "simple." I know it's much more than that, and I, I'm just going to leave it at that. But as far as referring at one, very excited to hear about this program. But I don't know if there's some, to get the drawdown on the federal funds and all that, I don't know if there's, how we refer people to the program, what eligibility things we have to meet, what kind of metrics we have to meet and all that, just because, you know, coming from DSS, much different world, but eligibility is a big thing and tracking patient outcomes, aggregating that, good stuff. So I assume that's cooked into the reporting that this master program has. But, and I don't know if it's a question for BH or you, but and I'm not worried about the reimbursement. I know that's all going to work out. But how do we figure out, how we monitor if we're getting bang for the buck in enrolling this program?
Thank you, April Gambra.
Close to the microphone.
Yes. April Gambra, Deputy Director for Behavioral Health Services, Mental Health and Substance Use Disorder Programs. Nice to meet you, Board Member Green. And so I will start off by saying that we are incorporating a routine plans of monitoring. We do onsite monitoring. We recently visited the facility. We are in constant collaboration with the entity. We receive invoices, payments, updates, reports. We did a presentation not too long ago about retention and how to access services. We've started tracking referral processes, so we know when individuals are going in and when they're coming out. We recently have had nine discharges with a retention rate of almost nine months. When individuals come into our facility, or for that matter, when they go directly to the program itself, they are screened for services at the lowest level of care. So it's not automatically that if you have an opiate use disorder, you are intaked into the program. There's a series of screening to determine best fit medical necessities. So if an individual does assess out as meeting that level of care, they are admitted into the program, and then we continuously, I mean, we do case management. We do care coordination, all of those things. We have data that's coming in. We're, we're getting better thanks to prompting from our community at developing reports and presentations on contracts. This is one of them that we're probably the most robust in. I'm very confident in our ability to work very closely with them and monitor individuals going in and coming out of the services.
Quick follow-up question, and it's just probably that my confusion and the community's broader confusion too, just how critical BH is in, in moving this stuff forward. But referrals from other agencies in our community, police, what have you, DSS programs, I'm thinking for some reason of dependency drug court and stuff like that. So I know you have existing relationships with any number of agencies and getting referrals, but this is, this is big. So if we can somehow communicate that bigness and get those people. This is all inpatient services for, for this? No.
No, so methadone is outpatient, particularly, they, they are a Medicaid assisted treatment program. So they provide more than just, and they're actually more than a MAP program as well. A tribal 638 clinic is all inclusive. It can provide anywhere from therapy to small medical, incidental medical services and Medicaid assisted treatment. Referrals going in, we would like to start to advertise more. We've been trying to get a handle on the dollar amount because it is considerably different than the $12 or $15 that state reimburses. These are $640 per service. And so we wanted to increase the referrals. We want to increase access to these programs. But as a county department, we are also responsible for that funding. And so it's been, it's been kind of difficult to navigate both. And so our hopes are that with today and the approval of this contract, we no more are concerned about the limitations for funding and our ability to cover those services. We are hopeful that we can move forward as we've ironed out many of the barriers that we, we originally had faced. You're welcome.
Supervisor Sabatier?
So you said you did an RFP, but you didn't really provide any description of what happened with the RFP.
Can I also do that? Okay, perfect. No reason to surprise, okay. So when we did an RFP for services, we did an RFP for all ASAM levels of care. And I, I will, if you don't mind.
An ASAM?
So an ASAM is the addiction.
Association for Society of Addiction.
Yes, thank you.
Thank you. So what that is, is it is all levels of care from early education to residential treatment, withdrawal management, all of the gamut of services under Drug Medical Organized Delivery System. We did an RFP for all of those services. As was previously mentioned, tribe, New Life is the only tribal 638 clinic. And they are the only NTP provider that provides methadone services. So we did not receive any bids or any responses for our ASAM levels of care. But I would also like to say that since 2017 to our contract with New Life, we have continuously reached out to AEGIS, to other organizations working with Partnership Healthcare Plan, Department of Healthcare Services, trying to find somebody who could provide methadone services as it is a mandated service to know avail. We could not get anybody to come to our county to be able to contract, to provide services within the 60-mile radius. Individuals were traveling as far as Santa Rosa or sometimes even further. So the, the trip to New Life is shorter, but although there are still barriers to accessing based on limitations with time and distance, right? But we made a series of efforts, and we, we did not come up with anything. Our best case was with AEGIS, but we couldn't find real estate within the county.
And the, one of the reasons I was asking is, well, obviously the details matter. And I appreciate you mentioning Santa Rosa because depending on where you are in the county, Santa Rosa is closer. And so I hope that we continue to try and have access to their facility in Santa Rosa if they're providing the same services in Ukiah because it takes me as long to get from my house to Lakeport as it does for Middletown to get to Santa Rosa just because things are closer depending on where you are in the county. So it's not just from Lakeport.
So we, we do have clients who are still attending MedMark, I believe is who they, it's DAC, Center Point DAC. They don't, we don't need a contract with them as a drug medical state plan contracted county. They can go anywhere and receive those services, and we are financially responsible for them, which was originally what prompted us to contract. The difference is between those programs and our, or New Life, is that New Life is a tribal 638 clinic. So individuals get the right to choose. They don't have to go to New Life. They don't have to go to MedMark or another DAC, another entity. But none of those other entities are tribal 638 clinics. So they don't use the methods that New Life incorporates into their diverse population that they serve. They don't just serve Native American populations or the tribal community. They do open it up to all, right? But the other programs, they do not offer tribal NTP services.
It's just that there was a, a reason given that it's the closest, and I think it just depends from where you're coming from. You, Supervisor Green, you mentioned you're not worried about the reimbursement, and I am. I know that we're changing our strategy in comparison to 2122. Now there's no payment to New Life until we have been reimbursed. And I've had to sit down with CSAC because I'm very concerned about the growing amount of dollars that are going through the department. And I want to make sure that we do have the ability to reimburse and that we don't get stuck with the bill. And one of their, they, they didn't say it's not going to work. They didn't say it will work. They said, never heard of this before. Where how do you get reimbursed by the state if you can't prove that you paid for it? And so I'm concerned about reimbursements in, in that sense. And I know I checked in with Director Metcalf. We have a million dollars so far that has accumulated just through September. This doesn't count October and November. And, and I'm just going to be brief and blunt. I'm concerned about seeing a contract after we've already incurred a million dollars so far without a contract. That's a separate thing. And so if that's for three months, then I expect that it'll be possibly close to the $4 million range by the time that we're done. We're asking for 10 million. We've already had to borrow money last year because of the fact that we were paying prior to getting reimbursed. We did receive the majority of the reimbursements. I believe there's still some negotiations with Medicare for $300, $400,000 or something. So it's not perfectly ironed out. And you're asking for 10 million, one right now, one quarter is 1 million. I'm very comfortable with doubling last year's and saying 3.2. Come back if you need to amend it and let us know what the status is of reimbursement. Because if we're at 3.2 and we still haven't gotten zero reimbursements, and we're still trying to figure out if this is going to work exactly as planned, I'd rather have that conversation than say, go for it for 10 million. Because we can always amend, we could always change. But I, I have concern that such a large number, if we find ourselves where, I mean, New Life has to pay their bills. And if they start requesting money that we don't have, we don't have $10 million to give unless the reimbursements are coming through. So I want to move something forward, and I'd like to offer 3.2 since it's anticipated possibly about 4 million for the full year. Yes, it does add another hurdle where you have to come for an amendment at a later time. But that's, that's where I feel comfortable at this moment in time.
Jennifer, I see your hand up, so I'd like to give you the floor.
Sure, thank you so much. So I think one of the things that may help in your deliberations on this particular motion is that the California Medicaid budget relies on the provision of local county funds to pay for part of the services, right? We use your county behavioral health realignment funds to fund the share of your drug medical and your specialty mental health services care. The tribe, in the process that has been presented to the Department of Healthcare Services from both the county as well as the tribal clinic, was a very similar process to how we do it today for both the county behavioral health system overall, as well as there are 19 designated public hospitals in the state of California that use what's known as intergovernmental transfers for how that funding is provided. And so what has been provided to the department for, for your county in particular was essentially a proposed cash fund process by which patients are seen in the clinic. The clinic generates both an invoice to the county for those services that map to the amount of funding that the tribe will provide the county so that the county can then attest to the state that a local government cost has been incurred. Because tribes are recognized as governmental entities, and their funds are as, as usable and as fungible as the county funds. And so there is a process that is pending at the department such that that would allow for this contract to move forward. And so it really, it is a legitimate way in which Medicaid, not only in California, but nationally, is how Medicaid programs fund their services is using local funds or tribal funds as the non-federal share. And so I think that's also been some of the, the ways in which we have worked with CSAC and CBHDA and the department in how to effectuate this, this particular contract change.
Just to finish off real quick, you said the word pending, and I know, and I know that Director Metcalf also said, we hope that it will work out this way. And how many other counties are doing this? We're still the only one, which is why I'd love to say yes to make sure we get at least past the six-month mark so that we can, again, check in and see how this is going. Because this is a large number of money where if it doesn't go well and the pending doesn't end up going well. It, it's not an issue of the contract with New Life. It's an issue of the reimbursement coming from. I mean, we just got canceled by Governor Newsom, and luckily now we're back on. That could potentially happen for things. We know there's a $25 billion deficit. I'll stop there, but that, I'm looking for my comfort zone for this so that you can move forward.
So not to sound crass, but it essentially doesn't matter how much the contract is because we're still on the hook for any services that are encumbered from New Life. And so whether or not they bill us $1 or 10 million or 100 million, we would still have to pay for that because it is a mandated service. Now, the agreement that we have entitles us to reimbursement at that full federal OMB rate. Without that agreement in place, and I understand the, the agreement isn't necessarily what's in question, but the amount, we would have no recourse or entitlement to that full reimbursement rate. We would be stuck with a reimbursement of about $15 for a service that is costing us over 600. And so regardless, again, of whether or not, how, what the dollar amount is, I think it would be a very, a very dark reality if we were in a situation where they were halting Medicaid payments due to our budgetary situation, and I, I'm not sure that that situation has a precedent. And I'm not sure that I feel comfortable, or pardon me. I'm not sure that it, you know, that would be a wise way to inform our provision of services. It is risk averse, and I understand that that's definitely a concern from a federal budget standpoint. However, at this point, I don't know that those federal Medicaid dollars are in question when we're looking at reimbursement from, you know, for these services. Does that make any sense?
And I'd also like to just add that, correct me if I'm wrong, Chrissy, please, but regardless, we are still entitled, whether or not it works, whether or not this proposed mechanism of payment and reimbursement is approved at the federal, we are still allowed a certain percentage of payment back on that dollar. So we're not even talking about the full 10 million that we are at.
So we're not even talking about the full 10 million that we are at risk of not getting payment for if, in, right, because we haven't been guaranteed that payment. We're talking about 10% on a 90%. Or we're talking about, at worst case, 50/50 on that dollar. So that, the risk is a lot less than it appears at surface, right? So we're only asking for the consideration on the 10% and the 50%. We are guaranteed those other payments as we've received, how much in? We've received 80% of it? 70% of it?
Yeah.
At least. Everything that we've built up, we've already gotten back. We're talking $300,000. And I understand it's a lot. It is a lot of money. But it is small compared to the 10 million that is being presented.
Supervisor Price.
My question was along the lines of the pending, the process being pending as well. And I was wondering if Jennifer could speak to that.
Sure. So today in California, it is a really routine process that the department works with, like I said, with counties and public hospitals for these, either, they're called CPEs, which are Certified Public Expenditures, or IGTs, which are intergovernmental transfers. And especially for like the public hospitals, there are IGTs that are done in the hundreds of millions of dollars. So it is a, it is a routine process. I think what we wanted to do was that tribes today in California do not fund any of their tribal services. So Pinoleville and New Life Clinic is the first tribe to offer to fund the non-federal share. And I think that is the process that we put in front of the department for consideration was, you know, reminding them that they have full legal authority under federal law to do this. It has to be voluntary, right? You cannot require the tribe to fund these services. So they did so voluntarily. They are doing it under federal law allowance. And I think the department has just been unfortunately over subscribed to a lot of other work. And so again, Director Metcalf and the tribal chair have sent a letter to the department saying, we would really like your swift review of this process so that we can move forward. And I know that the supervisor was in contact with CSAC, which was also helpful in putting some pressure on the state to act. But it's not an unusual process by any stretch of the imagination. It is done and has been done for years and years at the state level in terms of using other funds to draw down federal dollars.
All right. Supervisor Green.
Just one last thing. Again, I plead ignorance. I look forward to our orientation someday. But again, over in DSS land. So I don't know if you've estimated, just ballpark the amount of referrals you might be able to get over there and all that. But to Supervisor Sabatia's concerns about timely reimbursement at least, do we have enough ducks in a row in your current eligibility screening and stuff to get people in the pipeline and then do whatever paperwork you need to recoup? You're feeling good about that? I see people shaking heads.
Yes, oh, absolutely.
I see, okay. Thank you.
All right. So I'll open it up to the public briefly to see if there's anyone that wants to comment on this online. All right. Not seeing any hands up, I'll bring it back to the board for either further discussion or action.
Payment. Contractors invoices shall be submitted in arrears no more than 180 days after the date of service or such other time that is mutually agreed upon in writing shall be itemized. And county shall make payment within 30 days. Just kind of checking in, typical language in our agreements, but not typical agreement that we have, yet it's not, I feel, in writing.
No, the 100, we actually extended it to the 120 days so that they could, because they bill Medicare and then whatever Medicare doesn't pay, they bill to us. So we had to give them extra time to bill the Medicare and then to bill us and for us to process that payment. But then the payment reimbursed, it should have, it should say, within 30 days of being reimbursed by DHCS.
I would love to add that to make sure that that is. So noted.
We, yes, I'm, yeah. Yeah.
There's nothing further, Honorable Chair. I move that we waive competitive bidding according to Section 38.2, parentheses 2, and approve the agreement between the County of Lake and New Life Health Authority, DBA New Life LLC, for substance use disorder outpatient drug-free services, intensive outpatient treatment services, and narcotic treatment program services for fiscal year 2022-23 in the amount of $10 million.
I think the, it's just motion to waive first and then we'll do the B after, so, right?
Yeah, and it's as amended.
I didn't see the B in there, or I would have said it.
Yeah, that's normally how you do it, but you can, you could do it all at once, except if for any reason you have to reopen one, you have to reopen both.
We'll do the.
So what's the B? The agreement?
Yeah.
Okay, you want me to do the A?
Yes.
All right. How about, I move we waive competitive bidding according to Section 38.2, parentheses 2.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
I also move we approve the agreement between the County of Lake and New Life Health Authority, DBA New Life LLC, for substance use disorder outpatient drug-free services, intensive outpatient treatment services, and narcotic treatment program services for fiscal year 2022-23 in the amount of $10 million.
As amended.
As amended? Was there an amendment?
Yeah.
There's amendment on the language.
You can specify that it be potentially amendment. Sorry.
Just as amended is fine.
As amended.
What was the amendment again?
The amendment was so that we don't have to be forced to pay if we have not been reimbursed. So 30 days after receiving reimbursement is, I believe, the language that should be added to. Yes.
As amended.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries 4-1. All right, thank you for that and thank you for the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer.
Thank you very much.
All right. We'll now go back to 7.2, consideration of agreement with Lake County PEG for professional video, videography services specifically for coverage of municipal advisory councils. All right. Supervisor Sabatia, you brought this forward, so.
I'm trying to share the screen. So before you is an agreement between the County of Lake and Lake County PEG TV for professional services of videography. And so just real quick, PEG Station, PEG stands for Public Education Government, started out here in Lake County with a connection with Yuba Community College where they were able to help create the PEG Station so that you can have classes coming through from Yuba College and then it's expanded into what PEG is, which is a federal program. We work with MediaCom, we get a portion of the fees that people pay for getting cable. We also have a 1% pass-through that provides us with capital improvements and such. What we are aiming for is we're looking to add more local content, we're looking to expand membership and viewership, and we're looking to setting a new standard in our local broadcasting. We have been expanding our membership and our viewership, mostly viewership. We have a new website that is just purchased last week that we are intending to start and advertise very soon. And all of the above recordings from the city of Clear Lake to Lake County Board of Supervisors meetings, including other things like Planning Commission, are all there. Lakeport is about to go live by the end of the year so that they can go ahead and also stream their content directly onto PEG TV Channel 8, which actually will be awesome for us because that means we have to limit our meetings to 6:00 PM and not any later or else we're going to be broadcasting on top of Lakeport's meetings. It's a good thing. What the agreement offers is to provide videography services for specifically, I didn't want to make it about too many different things, start small, somewhat of a pilot program with the municipal advisory councils. We have been approached by five out of the six. I know Cobb Area Council has spoken to PEG, the entire North Shore Town Halls has spoken to PEG, and just recently, we had Middletown Area Town Hall also reach out to PEG for similar services. Why offer videography services? We want to make sure we're keeping the public informed and easy access to our meetings. It helps create a historical archive of all the meetings and also creates what we're aiming for, which is more local content for PEG to share with the community. So the process in which that a videographer can be requested is the MAC would request a videographer by contacting Lake County Administration. Now, that could be the MAC, that could be the Board of Supervisor, either one. But they have to communicate with Lake County Administration as they are the ones that basically say yes or no to utilizing this agreement for the services. The best practice would be to request for the calendar year, just that would make sure that we can have a videographer available for those dates rather than asking within a small time period available. Admin would process the request and if approved, they would forward that request to PEG and we would make sure that there's a videographer available. PEG videographer would record the meeting and within seven days, the MAC and admin would receive the final edited product and PEG would upload the final edited product to our website and affiliated sites. We have YouTube and others. And we would also potentially, if allowable in our programming, play back on Channel 8 as well. Every month, an invoice from PEG would be submitted to the auditor controller for payment. It would cover the setup time, it would cover the meeting time, and would cover the editing time. The cost of, to the county would be at $40 per hour for videography services. And again, this includes what I just stated. And the, can't read that, I gotta look up. Current agreement is for a maximum not to exceed $10,000 for fiscal year 2223 through June 30th, 2022. Oops, I'm so sorry, June 30th, 2023, typo. There's the poss, once we look at that, there's already a possibility that we would be coming back if everything's working for next year to look at 20,000, since we're almost six months into it. That's why we're asking for 10,000 to make sure we can cover it. There is the potential for training that's part of the agreement so that we can train somebody from the Town Hall Municipal Advisory Group so that they can go ahead and lease our equipment and use the equipment themselves so that you don't have to go through our videographers. But they do need to be trained because we want to make sure that the final product is of equal quality so that whenever somebody is watching these, they can predict what it is that they were, what the quality of the product will be. And again, the equipment lease per use is $50. Streaming capabilities are definitely possible, but first and foremost, we would need to ensure that the internet capabilities of the facility that the meeting is taking part in has that standard so that we can make sure that we have a quality streaming capability. We're asking for 5 Mbps upload and 15 Mbps download and you can find that out from your local provider and make sure that we have that. The reason again is to ensure the quality of the product. Zoom is always a possibility, but streaming it in any other ways, we need to make sure we have a higher speed. Our next steps as PEG, if this is approved, is we would go ahead and purchase the equipment. I was just told recently that the equipment should be available, but we have been dealing with supply chain issues. We're still waiting on one of our cameras that we ordered a while ago. So just because there's an approval today, if there is approval today, doesn't mean that next month we will be ready to go. We need to make sure we have all the equipment. We have equipment already that can be utilized, but we want to make sure that we don't patch together equipment. We want to make sure this is the complete package so that we can provide, again, the quality product that we would be providing. So as soon as it's received, we would let all the MACs know and they can go ahead and start requesting videography services through the Lake County Administration. And I believe that is my presentation.
Supervisor Price.
Yeah, I think this is good. It, I think it'll help with the consistency across the municipal advisory councils too, having a standardized platform. I, I know in the Cobb Area Council, we've had a great team doing it, but it's been all volunteers and so that's always problematic. And so if we want to build sustainability into expanding the participation for these meetings, I think it's helpful. I, I don't know what the viewership of PEG is. I don't really know if anybody in my area watches it. I haven't had cable in a long, long time. What's most important, I think, to my advisory council is that it's on Zoom and streamed on Facebook. That's how they get the most participation. But if it was recorded and then on a YouTube channel, I think that would be helpful too. What is the time for the post-production editing? Because if it's, if it's a 40 hours, $40 an hour, so our meetings never go longer than two hours plus $50, how much more is going to be built into each meeting? Because I think that's a little bit of an unknown.
So the idea of editing is mainly to put the front, what is the municipal advisory committee and just kind of intro and credit or something of the kind. We're not sitting there to make it perfect. It's mostly just to make sure that it's recognizable where you are, what's being said, who's speaking, making sure the quality is there. But we were looking at, I believe, about $175 per meeting or $200 per meeting. If you would like to come to the microphone, I know that our videographer here, Sam Houston, has been a part of this process and this conversation. But I believe it was anywhere between $175 to $250 per meeting. Again, the editing is not meant to be.
Yeah.
Commercial quality, movie quality stuff.
Okay, so Sam Houston, yeah, I brought this, I brought this subject up after.
During the budgets, right? Talked about it, right?
I'm sorry.
During the budgets, we talked about it, yes.
Right, you're right. I brought this up because of, so anyway, first off, to address your question, I factored in that we're going to have templates. Each, each, each meeting will have its own little template that'll be, have just a beginning slide, like what we do here.
Right.
Basically the same thing. The editing is just to take out if, because I want people to start the meeting early so that we make sure we get the entire content. So what they basically do is cut that off and then if there's any breaks, they cut those out because that way the public, as we've learned here, they know they can rely on the data being accurate. And then we put the end on and then we format it to fit, there's two formats. There's one for, and it will be on YouTube, it'll be on, actually, it'll be on the County of Lake YouTube and Facebook page. It'll also be on PEG TV YouTube and Facebook page. So there's four different venues that it will be distributed to. So, okay, so that was that. The editing should, is basically the rendering time that it will end up taking, which I average in a two-hour meeting, you're probably looking at about 45 minutes at rendering time to edit that or to render it out to what, the final product, and then to be able to distribute it into two different formats that are needed.
Okay. And then what about conflicts? Because I know we have municipal advisories, meetings at the same time.
So the plan is that there, there is going to be a conflict in the beginning. So we'll have to work that out is one has it one month, one has it the other month. Once we, my vision for this is once we have this system in place and working, we'll probably look at getting two other systems so that, because I can see this happening, I can see this expanding to not only the Town Hall meetings, I also see this going to the schools. Because I've heard like schools that can't afford sporting events, but they want to record them. Or it's even been, I've even been approached by school superintendents, is this possible that they could, they could do that as well? Well, we can't do it with this one system, but we could do it with two or three. But we first have to, we first have to walk here or just have a, have a beta test and then we can take it, take it further.
Okay. The only other thing I saw was the advertising for vacant positions and I don't really think that's necessary because anybody that would be eligible to pick up a seat on a Town Hall has to participate and be in attendance. So it kind of makes it a moot point, I think, if you're trying to reach people that aren't already participating.
Okay.
It was mostly as an offer for any PSAs, but I guess I made it very specific to do that. And I will say, we do have two videographers that are ready to go and we hope to get more videographers as well. more videographers as well, because sometimes some videographers are going to be on vacation, we still want the service to be available, so. Sam's right on the fact that it would just be one mobile unit that we can carry around, and obviously, there are conflicts, as you just stated, and we hope to overcome some of those in the future.
All right, Supervisor Green.
Yeah, appreciate you bringing this forward. There are other tools in the toolbox, including for those that are currently tasked with zooming these, these meetings, I guess if we have the Pro account, we can do downloads of those recordings, and those could be posted on our county website, so nothing in this appears to limit our ability to get video up of, of the MACs to PEG that I'm seeing, so that's good. And so, yeah, I applaud this, this is kind of novel, just, I haven't had the ability to meet with my, my one MAC yet, Scotts Valley, I'm going to meet with them for the first time next Monday, and one of my questions, as we approach the end of the COVID emergency, and my general concerns about how we communicate, love a Zoom if somebody's three counties away, but if you're in a municipal advisory council mode, that tends to be kind of close and personal and pretty accessible, you know, the people that live in my MAC all live in Scotts Valley, so, you know, for transparency purposes, I'm not opposed to getting it recorded, but if I end up talking with them and we end up moving away from hybrid meetings and going to in-person meetings, I don't know, it's just kind of a question of bang for the buck. I certainly support transparency, on the other hand, committee meetings, council meetings by their nature are kind of smaller in nature, and the issues they cover are smaller in nature, and if they grow into bigger issues, they tend to come to the full board or the planning commission or whatever for, for a fuller hearing, so definitely going to support this, because I think as a pilot project at least, it's absolutely something we should do, but I just want to signal personally that, other than the transparency thing, I do have a bang for the buck kind of issue, I'm definitely going to be stressing my, my personal opinion that in-person communication, even as we get into the last couple bumps of COVID and whatever RSV comes during the winter, I really value that, and I think one thing we've lost in this constant posting of streams and what have you on YouTube and, and Facebook, is some dilution of messaging, because if we get into a live stream situation, there's some expectation that those live streamers who are watching can interact with us and give their input, and that, that may not always be the case, just as isn't with the case with our Facebook live stream right now. I mean, they're interacting with us, but we're not actually interacting with them. So, definitely another tool in the toolbox, I like the idea a lot, I'm, I'm just not entirely sure that I'm going to be jumping my MAC in, in that direction immediately.
I, I'm just gonna respond, you have people that don't live here, you have people that have second homes, other properties, they want to be involved in any way they can, and if we do get to a point where they, they're only watching the broadcast, then that's really important, you have to understand that, a lot of people don't live here. The other part is, it is easy to broadcast on Zoom, but if you don't have all the microphones set up, then the recording is absolutely worthless, so, only the person who's sitting in front of the laptop. So it's more complicated when you start looking at hybrids and recordings, and it's bigger than a lot of volunteers should be responsible for.
Also, I'll just add, having a lot of experience with this in my district, a lot of times, there are conflicts with specific directors being at meetings, certain, certain MACs would like to require a specific director to be there every meeting, and at times, there's yours, at one time, Math and Laugh was at the same time, and so sometimes, a director would be speaking before Math, but then be like, well, I don't speak till 7:00 here, so I can come in at 6:00. So that, that helps in that aspect for Zoom. The other thing is, is we also, in, in a couple of them, they have, like if there's a business or something working with us, like we have Cal Water, and they can't make it every meeting, sometimes it helps that we have the Zoom capability, because they can, they can actually call in as well, and, and there's others, other situations that help, but if, of course, if that Zooms, if that Zoom opportunity comes to an end, some way, some way, shape or form, especially when it comes to the, the emergency, like you were saying, I do think it's still very imperative that they stream the meetings, or, not stream, I'm sorry, record and put them on YouTube, and the reason I say that is because we do conduct minutes, of course, but at the same time, a lot of the folks love watching the video afterwards, so they can get it, if they're not at the meeting, they can actually get the meeting content and look at it from there. The other thing is, is that I think when you were mentioning, there was a mention about the editing and whatnot, I mean, I've been doing it, and as long as like the Zoom's finished, it, it takes a while to download itself, and usually I'll put it in a Dropbox for Sam or somebody to put it on one of the social media accounts, but if I can get it done, I'll upload it right away to Facebook, and it's just the whole meeting, it just goes right in, and so, and so the editing will be a good attribute to it, because you'll have like Math, and then it'll say whatever else, and there's times when the internet goes out because of the, because of what's stated in yours, I know at Earth, there's always a situation at the, in Lucerne, it happens, in Upper Lake, a couple times it's happened, and so if they record it, just from a recording stance, rather than, you know, just zooming, doing the Zoom, that, that puts us in a good position to at least have the meeting, have the meeting posted on YouTube or the, or the website, and I think a good thing to do is when we post it on the website, like Sam was mentioning, like on our website, that's where the announcements can come, that I know there was one recently from the admin office last week, then you could just do that, rather than doing it on the, the TV or whatever, you can put it on that, I was just thinking of that when they, when they mentioned it, so, you know.
And I'll just add, one of the things that I do a lot in preparation for our meetings is going through the archive videos, what did we say? What was the discussion? Because as you stated, Chair, the, the, the meeting minutes only say so much, to understand the actual context of how we got to a decision is a whole different thing, that you can't always just type up, that should be, that's, that's difficult to expect. What I love though is the coincidence that we also happen to have a brand new website, and if you go to our Agenda Center, almost every single Town Hall is on there with agendas, and there's a space for a video icon, so again, it's very easy to go through all the archives of all of the Town Halls and be able to do that, and each Town Hall's going to have to work to make sure to keep all that up to date, but I think we have a great start and a good template for us to begin this project with.
Yeah, I think it's going to be easier for the Town Halls to keep their, you know, everything organized, if they, if this is what they choose, again, they have to make this choice, we don't tell them anything, this is all their choice, but, but things turn big at these meetings, real big, and they may not ever come here, but they're big and they are important for that community, and, and, and however these Town Halls choose to utilize or not utilize, it is a choice for them, and I think ultimately, it'll make it easier and better for the community, but, but it's up to them.
The sound is usually the biggest problem, and the reason why is, like, you're there in the meeting and everybody could hear, like, there's a guy in the back that says something, and everybody can hear him, but the people that are on Zoom can't hear, and then, when, if it is recorded, you would need some better sounding to, systems to happen as well, and so, I know that's frustrating for certain folks as well, I know it's been an ongoing issue, and it's, it's also really, I mean, for us, I know we have a real structured area, but with, with the MACs, you're talking about volunteers, and, and at the, at the same time, they're dealing with, you know, some folks that aren't going to get up or do anything, and they're not going to listen regardless, there's one guy that said, I'd like to see you try to make me leave this meeting, you know, but, so, so, and these folks are volunteers, they're doing a lot of the work, and that's one of the things I was concerned about with the training, I, I think sometimes with the, the folks in the Town Hall, on the committees, or on the, you know, Town Councils, I think it gets into a slippery slope sometime when they have to conduct this work, because a lot of, there's some people that want to go above and beyond, but I've also dealt with individuals that really want to help so they can control the dynamic of the meeting, not only the meeting, but what's been projected out, or, you know, whatever the case may be, and so I always worry about that at certain times, but at the same time, this is a really good thing for me, and I'd like to see the, this, this go forward, and I'm willing to work in any way to make it be equitable and, and work out in general, because I, I know that my Town Halls all want it, they're all happy about it, yeah. Go ahead, Supervisor.
And just last comment, I know, I believe it was in the memo that I submitted, but in speaking with administration, that coming out of the admin special projects budget is where $10,000 can be found, so just wanted to make sure that the public was aware as well as everyone else.
Supervisor Simon?
Yeah, obviously, my number one thing is making sure that you have someone there that can work it all the time, technical support, because I'm always very clear, that is, that is a need, so making sure PEG is, is going to do that. Ultimately, we always, you know, we're having these conversations, we had this conversation at the last Math, you know, I like the list of equipment, because we do need a new projector down at the community center where we have our meetings, so some of the stuff all aligns. But I did have a question just on budgeting issues, on it coming from the admin special projects, because don't we get money from MediaCom to do this?
Do you want to address that?
We get money from MediaCom, right? So where is that money going?
So?
Wouldn't, wouldn't this be part of it? So that's just my question, if, if they're paying for it to be a public education, and we have Miltown, or Municipal Advisory Committees, isn't that money already coming in to pay for this?
And I'll go ahead and start, and I'll let Sam finish.
Simple answer.
The, the money is there for the infrastructure of PEG to be able to provide content to the public, but videographers doing the work to create the content in order to bring it and put it on PEG is a different situation.
So is the hardware covered then?
Uh, yeah, so
Yes, the hardware or PEG.
Right, so that's how it works, it's, it's illegal to, to, to transfer that money into an operational budget.
Okay.
So, so PEG, so what PEG can do is they get the, they get the funding, and this is all PEGs, this is not just this one, this is all of them, because I've, I've been involved with about six different PEGs, so they, so you can't allocate funds to, for a videographer, that's, that's, that's PEG's job, is how do they get that? But, PEG on the other hand, can go out, if they have the money, they could buy a building, they can buy equipment, they can, but the other challenge to that is, if you buy this stuff, then how do you
Staff it.
... make it work? Because if you have no personnel, do you see, see what I'm going with that?
See where you're going with it, but that doesn't make any sense.
Yeah, well, that's just how, that's how media, that's MediaCom, and it's not just MediaCom, it's, it's broadcast industry, that's how they do it, whether it be Comcast and Marin, or, I'm trying to think of a, that's, that's how, that's how they get, that's how they get around it.
All right.
And, and if any MAC chooses to do their own recordings, it's absolutely free to submit to PEG, and for us to go ahead and air it and put it on there, we are the infrastructure so others can provide content to be able to display on there, we're offering a service where we can create the content for you, but we can't pay for a videographer ourselves because we don't have, our operational budget barely covers our station manager, our insurance and everything else that we have to afford to make PEG actually run, and our rest of the 1% pass-through is only held for capital improvements such as equipment and things of the kind as well.
And then it's also based on, if your viewership goes down, if, if MediaCom's viewership goes down, which it has been going down.
We get less.
You get a whole lot less money. So what PEG, what this does for PEG is it allows to increase viewership, because if more people are watching, maybe they will be willing to donate more, which will then take PEG to be able to charge, I think they're charging $25
Membership.
For membership, well, that, that $25 can go back into their operational budget, which means that then they can do more, they can do more production services, so I, eventually, like, what I'm willing to do is I will go out and train these people that want to use the equipment, and I'll make sure that they can go out there and do the job, I don't want to do their job, I just want to get them trained to do it, and then have them, so, I know that, that in this case, Supervisor, or Chair Crandall has someone he, who has, who he wants to, who wants to learn how to do this stuff, and so we will, I will go out and train them, there's not going to be a cost involved in that, I'll just go out and do it, so he'll be, so, and then eventually, hopefully, they'll, we'll see a whole lot of memberships, so there's, it's, it's just, it's just setting it up so that PEG can create more of an operational budget as well.
All right, I had to comment on that one, and since it is education, I, I agree with having the conversation with the schools, because a videography class, we should be able to do that that way too, so, anyway, all right, I just had that question on those, but I, I do support it, it's been talked about, we still have Zoom, you know, that is used, but we do have connectivity issues sometimes, even in Miltown, so that's something we have to build on, maybe we could talk to MediaCom about having better
I believe, I believe CAO Parker's working on that.
So that is an issue, and we can't, cannot provide that right now. I, I have, I have tried to broadcast in every place in Lake County, there's only a couple places, so we cannot provide that, what we can do though, is we can record it and then turn it around, get it out there, so that, in a timely manner, that, that, who, all, anyone who wants to view the, the information has it readily available to them.
And I do agree, I just want to make one comment on something that Supervisor Green said, is, you know, Zoom and everything is great, but for your municipal advisory committees, it's for a district, and what we get with Zoom a lot of times is people from all over the county calling in on a municipal advisory committee that is for a specific area, and it's, that's really jumped up since Zoom, so it's, it's challenged when it's for a district, and, you know, I appreciate people from North Shore and weighing in, but it's like, well, this is the, our, you know, that advisory committee's district, and I understand vacant, you know, second homes and stuff like that, but we get a lot of that.
Ms. Grant?
I, I'm sorry to even say this, but just to be clear, if you, if you would allow, this isn't really MediaCom's decision, this is a DIFCA matter, this is the Digital Infrastructure and Video Competition Act of 2006, and that's what limits the use of PEG fees.
Okay.
Okay, and it's generally historically been treated as a limitation only for capital costs, but the FCC is a little bit inconsistent with that, so I can't say it's a hard and fast rule any longer.
And we'll be reviewing that, that is one of the things that we will be reviewing in the upcoming December meeting, is what are our new limitations based on what we understand?
Okay.
And I think too, I know that Sam had brought up someone that I was looking into working on this, I actually wanted, either if this wasn't something that was going to come before us, I was looking at, trying to do this just specifically, you know, because I know that Supervisor Simon in the last discussion said, well, maybe within the districts, you could use your own discretionary funds to do something of the sort, and so that was my backup, 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 you know, and so I was talking to a gentleman I know that would be really good at this, very objective, would do all three in my district, and so that's, that was an ideal person, I would actually, you know, encourage him to apply with PEG to be a part of the whole group in general, but if there's a situation where that can't take place, I just want to make sure if there is a possibility for me to negotiate on my own, and if, if it's looking like they're going to train people to do this, I, I would much rather have one, one person that's not a Town Council member, or someone designated from them, rather me, to do this, because ultimately, it's always pointed out when there's public request acts or concerns about my MACs, that ultimately, if something's not done, when it comes to minutes posting, anything like that, they always refer back to, well, Supervisor Crandall is in charge of his districts, so if that's going to be the case, I would like to be the person that decides who is going to do that, rather than allow the Town Council to do it, if that makes sense, so.
And in keeping with that, in keeping with Supervisor Simon, not to overthink this, but it, it reminds me at KPFZ, where allegedly I'm still a programmer and I have a show due Friday and Saturday, I better think about what I'm going to do with it, but KPFZ puts the infrastructure in place, the platform, and then the content creators come in and do their programming, and I've done a mix of live, in-studio stuff, and I've done pre-recorded stuff, using my own equipment, using my own editing time and what have you, I'm not familiar enough with the MACs yet and how they're funded, so this initial funding request under admin makes perfect sense, admin carries a little bit of the load for the MACs anyway in terms of posting agendas and stuff like that, but, but I think longer term, you know, if this comes back again and it succeeds, you know, it, I think there will be a budgetary question next request, or two requests down the line, that probably we do need to find a budget line that is specific to supporting our MACs, not just in terms of videographers, but maybe we need to cover some of the staff time that admin is incurring in supporting them, and if it's not broken out separately now, no big surprise right there, but them. And if it's not broken out separately now, no big surprise right there. But I guess that's where I would take a look at going for future budgeting is the MACs, if they are going to be independent, they're, they're content creators. If they don't have a budget of their own just yet, maybe this will be kind of a goose to move down that path. So totally support this. But again, I'm kind of thinking in the content creator side.
All right. So what I'll do is I'll open it up to the public. I'm not seeing anyone in the chamber, so I'll open it up to Zoom. Betsy Khan, if you can unmute and we'll start your three minutes.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair and members of the board and Sam. I, I do value the ability to participate in many meetings conducted by many agencies and organizations in this county, including the municipal advisory councils. For one thing, since the advent of the COVID restrictions, I have been almost entirely homebound. And it has enabled me to participate in many more functions than I used to be able to do because I had to drive to them and take that time and wear and tear of my life and my vehicles to just get to a meeting where I could learn one or two important things. But I do want to mention that the municipal advisory councils, even though they might seem as though they're sort of insular and focused only on the business of their particular jurisdictional boundaries, which are still not qualif, extremely well defined, a lot of the issues that are dealt with impact all of us. Look what the Cobb Area Council did long ago with looking at the environment, looking at the tree mortality, getting support for preventive services, holding all those conventions and educational practices up there that, that have benefited every part of this county. Likewise, certain things are done in the Miltown area town hall where they developed their own area plan in 2010 that is the leader, it's the standard for developing area plans. And it was the municipal advisory council basically that got that done. So I think it would be helpful to, to understand how much we interact and how much importance there is in engaging the public in as much of this work as possible. I did want to mention, Anita Grant mentioned, described the impact, the actual agreements and CPUC authority over the, over the broadcast. But that's, that's an extremely interesting set of rules and the franchise agreements that the county managers do not provide for the support of the actual production. As Supervisor Green was talking about, content production is something else. You know, when you talk about people wanting to go above and beyond, I'm not sure what you're referring to. But I do think it's crucial that this ability, the Zoom, YouTube and Facebook broadcasting capacity has afforded so many more people the ability to join you on this meeting, for example, and to share things that are important to us, even if we cannot get to the courthouse. I understand Mr. Sabatier and Mr. Green both think it's important to have, be able to do face-to-face discussions, but that isn't always possible. As Supervisor Pisca said, there are a lot of people who have investments in this county that do not live here and people who cannot be here at the same time. Finally, I just want to mention the reduction of greenhouse gas emissions, which I believe is at the root of some of the governor's most important policies. The COVID itself resulted in the clearing of the air over the Himalayas, if you recall, back in 2020. And I think it's very valuable for us to not have to use our vehicles if we don't have to. Thank you so much for letting me speak.
Thank you. All right. Is there anyone else on Zoom that would like to discuss this item? And if not, I'll close public input, bring it back to the board for action.
Mr. Chair, if there's no further conversation or comments, I move to approve the agreement with Lake County PEG and, and the County of Lake for professional videography services specifically for the coverage of municipal advisory councils.
Second?
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Thank you for bringing this forward. Excited to see how this moves forward. All right. We are on our 7.6 addendum item, consideration of recognition of Department of Public Works Director Scott DeLeon for 2022 California County Engineer of the Year. And so I'll give this over to CAO Parker.
Thank you, Chair. I wanted this board to have an opportunity to acknowledge Public Works Director Scott DeLeon in his receipt of the 2022 County Engineer of the Year Award he received last week. And if I didn't push this, I don't think we would know about it. I got a, I received an email from a person attending CSAC and thought it would be important for this board to actually see the award and maybe take a photo with Scott.
Yes, you would not have heard about this. I'm sure you have that.
Congratulations.
Thank you. It was, it was a heck of a shock. See, I'm the chair of the committee that, that selects this award. And I went down to our CAC fall conference, fully expecting they give it away to somebody else. And they, they kind of snookered me and presented it to me. So it was, yeah, it was, it was a real shock. But pretty proud of it. CAC's wonderful organization. You all have participated in CSAC and that's kind of a sister, cousin of, you know, of CSAC. It's all public works directors and, and. I've been involved with the organization for basically as long as I've been here as the public works director. Sat on several committees. As I mentioned, I'm the chair of the scholarship committee. And, and I was a regional director for many years, Northern California Regional Director. And CAC's just been a great, a great way of learning and getting around other folks. And I'm sure you all have similar experiences when you get around your peers. And, and even though we're a small rural county, a lot of our problems are very similar to, to those in urban areas. They may have a few more resources to deal with things. But, you know, for, from my perspective, a pothole in Lake County is the same as a pothole in Marin County. And, and so anyway, it's been a great, been a great opportunity to be with that organization. And, you know, over the years when we've handed this out as to other folks, it's, it's not so much for a single thing that they did. It's more of a body of work. And so it's an honor to be recognized for that. So it's greatly appreciated. And I appreciate Susan Parker and, and her little elf that gave, gave up the information. I do appreciate you putting it on today's agenda and I, and I do appreciate sharing it with you. But yeah, I probably would not have. But anyway, it's, it's, I appreciate it. So thank you.
Congratulations, Scott. Good work.
Thank you.
Are you going to hang it on your wall?
I am going to hang that on my wall, yes.
Okay. So you're going to hang it on your wall, but you weren't going to tell us. Come on. Come on now. Very well deserved. I'm glad to hear it's for a body of work. I was thinking, what, did he build like a sundial bridge in Redding or something like that? And it's like, no, he fills potholes. Most recently helped keep our boat ramps open. And so we do appreciate, and we do see with or without the plaque, how hard your department works and how hard you work.
I appreciate that. Yeah, thank you. Yeah, the, one of the things that I, you know, in preparing for today, I was, I was thinking about some, some legacy things that we've done. And, and, you know, when the Valley Fire happened in 2015, it was really kind of the start of, of the major fires across California. And, and, you know, we, we developed, and I've got to give credit to Lars Ewing who put the, the RFP together. But we put a RFP together for hazard tree removal. And, and it was one of the first in the state to deal with FEMA and federal funds and, and, you know, the, the removal of those trees. And that was, for all the, the next successive fires in the state, that was, I mean, I can't tell you how many counties I gave that RFP to. And it became kind of the base for how other counties dealt with tree removal. So, you know, we, here, little Lake County was kind of the, the start of, of how the counties today deal with hazardous trees. So, you know, pretty proud of that. We took our lumps, of course, in, in learning and making mistakes. And other folks have benefited from that, but pretty proud of that.
Awesome.
Yep.
Yeah, you set the bar, you know, you really did. You know, Lake County did. And obviously you're a big part of that Lars. But that is, and it's coming full circle with the tree mortality and everything. It really is. So, yeah, it's been a pleasure and honor. I'll be one of the first ones. I heard about it from Susan too. And I'm like, man, we got to, we got to do something for him. So I imagine everybody else said it too, if they heard or had that conversation with Susan. But those accolades as you move through your career and everything are well deserved, Scott. Glad, very happy for you.
Thanks.
I'm glad you were surprised because you told me what you expected out there. And it was to hand out scholarships to students from the local area. That, I love it.
Yeah, it was, the president of our organization got ill at the, at the meeting. And they used that as kind of a little smokescreen to, well, we have to adjust our, our, our schedule here. And, and, you know, we were supposed to hand everything out on Friday and, and it was during the Thursday morning meeting. And, and so they used that as a kind of distraction. And then they started doing the, the Engineer of the Year Award. And I thought, well, hold on a second. I, I have a whole presentation for that. And, and they called my name. So it was, again, it was, it was, it was a surprise.
I like those moves. All right. Well, go ahead and open it up to the public briefly, just, just in case. I'm not seeing anyone online. So, oh, I see someone online. They don't see their hand up. So I'll go ahead and bring it back to the board. And I think Sam, of course, looks like he wants to get a picture.
And Scott just.
Oh, thank you.
Thank you for.
All right.
We're standing here. We're not heading around, Scott.
All right. Want to get Susan over?
Come on, Susan.
Yeah, Susan, you did this.
What's up with you?
Yeah, you go down there.
Yeah, you should go right next to him.
Oh, this is much better. Oh, yay.
He'll get you.
Take a couple of these.
Haven't heard that for a while.
Oh, yeah.
All right, Scott.
Thank you.
Thank you. Congratulations on that. All right. We've covered everything on the agenda. So we'll move on to closed session. In closed session, we have item 8.1, Public Employee Evaluation, County Administrative Officer. I'll read off 8.2, but we're going to push that to December 6. This is Public Employee Evaluation, Health Services Director. Again, that'll be pushed to December 6. 8.3, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 5456.9D1, Flesch versus County of Lake. 8.4, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code 54956.9D1, Sabaloni versus County of Lake. 8.5, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, City of Clear Lake versus Test State and Intestate successors of Bailey Lumber's Company et al. With that, we'll go into closed session. Thank you.
We are back in open session and we will be looking at item 8.3, Conference with Legal Counsel. No, what, what? I mean, 8.4. Did I say?
You said 3. Sorry.
Sorry. 8.3, Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation. Did I do it again?
8.4.
8.4. I wrote down 8.3. Okay, 8.4. Conference with Legal Counsel Existing Litigation Pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1, Sabaloni v. County of Lake.
I think all you got to ask is, was there any action?
Was there any action to be taken?
Yes, there was. Madam Chair, there was action to be taken. I move to approve the settlement agreement in the case of Sabaloni versus County of Lake and authorize the Chair to sign.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. And now we will be going back into closed session.